seven, I'm gonna call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order on May 21st. Um, at this point we're gonna enter into non-public, uh, pursuant to RSA 91A colon 32A. The dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee, um, which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of the person. Thank you. Moved by Rob. Can I do a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. This is a roll call vote. So Amy, I'm gonna let you start.
Amy, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Holly, aye.
Rob, aye.
It's five zero, so we are officially in non-public at 5:08. Thank you.
So we are now back. I have a couple of agenda adjustments, I think. Does this make sense to you, Gina? I think Dawn noted that we have a, I felt like we did this last month, but there's a donation that we need to approve.
Yeah, so what happened was, remember last month, we had two months and one of a principals report? So it was noted in the March board meeting, the March report, excuse me, but we went over April. So we never actually accepted the donation.
Okay, so we have to accept a donation tonight. So that'll be another deliberative item. It'll come up. We might do it during the principals report, I think. I'm going to follow Dawn's outline. So I believe it comes up under principals report. And then there's also, we are also going to add that the, the item that we usually do later on in June, when we authorize the superintendent to hire and accept resignations and terminate staff. We've been trying to do that earlier. We just did not put it on the agenda this month. So it's going to be on the agenda this month. Since we do it normally in June, we're going to do it in May. So is there any argument or problem with that? Is anybody gonna like beat me up?
Yeah, where are you gonna put it?
Um, I'm actually going to follow Dawn's agenda. Dawn, so where does she have it outlined or whatever? I think it's under deliberations.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the first item under deliberations is going to be the motion to authorize the superintendent to hire. So that will be that. And then the, the donation we will do during the principals report. As we're going to do the, we'll also approve the field trip request during the principals report. Well, we'll vote. I should not say we will approve it. We will vote to approve it. And we will also vote to accept the donation. And if you don't vote to accept the donation, I don't know what you're thinking. But so we're going to vote to accept that.
Wow, bold statements.
You know me, I'm going out on a limb. All right. Yeah, I know. Sometimes we don't want donations. I don't know. Okay. So are there any problems with that? Okay. So I am going to do notifications, resignations and correspondence. And then, I don't know.
Okay. If it's okay with you, I'll start with correspondence.
Sure.
So yesterday, we received from the state an updated general assurances form. We've already authorized Holly to sign it, and she signed it. But the updated version removes some inflammatory language. And so these are, this is due June 1st. So I'm going to have her sign the updated piece. So I just want to let everyone know that we're going to go forward with the updated one since we do have the time. All right. I'd like to move forward with resignations.
Sure.
Okay. Dear Mr. Gerson, I'm writing to confirm my resignation from the position of science teacher at Hollis Brookline High School, effective the end of the current school year. My final day will be June 18th, 2025. I am resigning due to relocation. I started at Hollis Brookline fresh out of college with no teaching experience and have grown personally and professionally here over the past six years into an experienced educator. I'm grateful for the opportunities and experiences that I have had, and I wish nothing but the best for the entire Hollis Brookline High School community. Sincerely, Nick Hausman.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of Nick Hausman as science teacher at the high school with an effective date of?
June 18th, 2025.
Move by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any comments? All right. Science.
Life science cert, but sometimes he'll do a physical science here and there.
Nothing that's producing a lack of certified coverage.
We are, the job is posted.
Okay, all in favor. Six zero, motion carries.
Superintendent Corey, I'm writing to formally resign from my position as teacher at Hollis Brookline High School, effective June 30th, 2025. I accepted the role of director of technology for SAU 41 and look forward to continuing to serve the Hollis Brookline School District in this new capacity. Thank you, John Boucher.
Great. And that would be a SAU position?
Correct.
So that would not be nominated tonight here. So we need a motion to accept the resignation of John Boucher as a high school science teacher at the high school with an effective date of June 30th, 2025. Move by Kate, seconded by Rob. All those in favor? Six zero.
To SAU 41, with gratitude beyond measure for the opportunities I've had, I have found in being part of SAU 41 in general and Hollis Brookline High School in particular, I am submitting my resignation from my position as assistant principal at Hollis Brookline High School, effective at the end of the 24-25 academic year. Resignations are supposed to be brief, straightforward and avoid undue elaboration, which makes it difficult to express how much I have grown during my time here, how grateful I am for the role I have been allowed to play in this learning community and how foundational Hollis Brookline has been in helping me become the educational leader I have hoped I could be when I decided to move from classroom teaching into administration. I leave not because I was dissatisfied or unhappy here, but because it seemed to be the right time to explore how another school system operates in order to become a more effective administrative leader and because I could finally be not quite so far from home and my family on a daily basis. I deeply appreciate the staff, students, parents, school board, administration and greater Hollis and Brookline communities for allowing me to be part of this community for as long as I have. With regret, Amanda Zeller.
Okay, so thank you. I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Amanda Zeller as the, as a high school assistant principal with an effective date of June 30th, 2025. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Before we vote, I just want to thank Amanda for her years of service, her times presenting here and also for such a nice letter. All those, any other comments? All those in favor? I didn't even look at you guys over there. Six zero. You're going to have to smack me. So actually count your votes. Six zero, motion carries.
Moving on to nominations. I would like to, I'm trying to make sure I can pronounce the name correctly. I would like to nominate Ariane Goslin.
Ariane.
Ariane Goslin, case manager at Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor's in psychology from Southern New Hampshire and a master's in general special ed, early childhood ed from Riviera University. Well, I would like to place her on master's step 13 for a salary of $78,431.
So I ended up having to restate all this, but, so I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Ariane Goslin for the position of case manager at the high school at a step 13, master's step 13, and a salary of $78,431. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Six zero, motion carries.
Ooh, you guys didn't help me out here. I would like to nominate Jessica Yanakopoulos as case manager of Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor in behavioral science from Granite State College and a master's in instruction and leadership from the University of New Hampshire. I'd like to place her on master's step four for a salary of $62,802.
Great. So that's a superintendent-elect's nomination. I need a motion to accept the nomination of Jessica. We said it once, case manager, the position of case manager at the high school with, at a degree, master's step four, $62,802. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. All in favor? I didn't ask if you had questions, but you voted. So six zero, motion carries.
Okay, so this one, I was told how to pronounce it early this morning and I forget.
Oh, it's Jody.
Jody, with a Y in the middle of it. Jody Demian. I'd like to nominate Jody Demian for ESOL teacher. Technically, it's a Hollis Brookline Middle School position, but the individual will be working district wide. She has a bachelor's in English and Women's Studies from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in English education from Plymouth State. We'd like to offer her master's plus 30, step 16, for a salary of $90,293.
Okay, so, wait, can we just, can we put the motion on the table first and then we can ask questions? I just want to do it in order. Okay, sorry.
I said the middle school. Working district wide. The middle school owns the position, but based on where students are.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Jody Demian for the ES, did I say that wrong? For the position of ESOL at HBMS. And that would be a master's plus 30, step 16, at a salary of $90,293. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions?
I'd like to nominate Alexander Dietzel for the position of biology teacher at Hollis Brookline High School. He has a bachelor's in molecular biology from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in education in biology from Pace University. Alexander will be placed on master's step 11 for a salary of $74,651.
Great. So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Alexander Dietzel for a biology teacher for the high school, master's step 11, $74,651. Any motion? Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would like to nominate HBLM Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at Hollis Brookline High School, the salary of $103,000.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at a master's plus 30, step 10, for a salary of $77,859. All those in favor?
I would like to nominate HBLM Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at Hollis Brookline High School, the salary of $103,000.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Cole Etten for the position of assistant principal at Hollis Brookline High School, the salary of $103,000. So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Cole Etten as a assistant principal with an effective date of June 30th, 2025. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would like to nominate Ariane Goslin.
Ariane.
Ariane Goslin, case manager at Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor's in psychology from Southern New Hampshire and a master's in general special ed, early childhood ed from Riviera University. Well, I would like to place her on master's step 13 for a salary of $78,431.
So I ended up having to restate all this, but, so I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Ariane Goslin for the position of case manager at the high school at a step 13, master's step 13, and a salary of $78,431. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Six zero, motion carries.
Ooh, you guys didn't help me out here. I would like to nominate Jessica Yanakopoulos as case manager of Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor in behavioral science from Granite State College and a master's in instruction and leadership from the University of New Hampshire. I'd like to place her on master's step four for a salary of $62,802.
Great. So that's a superintendent-elect's nomination. I need a motion to accept the nomination of Jessica. We said it once, case manager, the position of case manager at the high school with, at a degree, master's step four, $62,802. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. All in favor? I didn't ask if you had questions, but you voted. So six zero, motion carries.
Okay, so this one, I was told how to pronounce it early this morning and I forget.
Oh, it's Jody.
Jody, with a Y in the middle of it. Jody Demian. I'd like to nominate Jody Demian for ESOL teacher. Technically, it's a Hollis Brookline Middle School position, but the individual will be working district wide. She has a bachelor's in English and Women's Studies from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in English education from Plymouth State. We'd like to offer her master's plus 30, step 16, for a salary of $90,293.
Okay, so, wait, can we just, can we put the motion on the table first and then we can ask questions? I just want to do it in order. Okay, sorry.
I said the middle school. Working district wide. The middle school owns the position, but based on where students are.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Jody Demian for the ES, did I say that wrong? For the position of ESOL at HBMS. And that would be a master's plus 30, step 16, at a salary of $90,293. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any other questions?
I didn't ask if you had questions, but you voted. So six zero, motion carries. Okay, so this one, I was told how to pronounce it early this morning and I forget.
Oh, it's Jody.
Jody, with a Y in the middle of it. Jody Demian. I'd like to nominate Jody Demian for ESOL teacher. Technically, it's a Hollis Brookline Middle School position, but the individual will be working district wide. She has a bachelor's in English and Women's Studies from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in English education from Plymouth State. We'd like to offer her master's plus 30, step 16, for a salary of $90,293.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Alexander Dietzel for a biology teacher for the high school, master's step 11, $74,651. Any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions on this? Is this filling the, was?
This is filling Camille Carson.
Camille Carson, okay. So there's still, there's still an opening in the science department because of the resignation from tonight. Okay.
We had two resignations tonight. So we will have one opening.
Oh, two from science, yes, okay. Okay, so, so this person is filling a resignation from last month. And then, okay. All those in favor? Six zero.
I would like to nominate HB alum Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at Hollis Brookline High School. Sarah comes with a bachelor's in biochemistry from Concordia University and master's in education and curriculum and instruction from Southern New Hampshire University and a master's in public health from Southern New Hampshire University. I'd like to place her at master's plus 30, step 10, for a salary of $77,859.
Okay, so that would be step 10?
Step 10. I know. As my former student.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at a master's plus 30, step 10, at $77,859. And this would be at the high school. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? We're getting old, people.
And then I would also like to bring forward a non-professional staff, but an administrator recommendation. I would like to nominate Cole Etten for the position of assistant principal at Hollis Brookline High School, the salary of $103,000.
So I need a motion to accept the nomination of Cole Etten as assistant principal of the high school at a salary of $103,000. Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any other comments? All those in favor? All those in favor? The language just doesn't come out. No, is there any other, are there any questions or comments? Welcome to the district, Cole. Well, all those in favor? Six zero.
And professionally here over the past six years into an experienced educator. I'm grateful for the opportunities and experiences that I have had, and I wish nothing but the best for the entire Hollis Brookline High School community. Sincerely, Nick Hausman.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of Nick Hausman as science teacher at the high school with an effective date of?
June 18th, 2025.
June 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Second by Rob. Are there any comments? All right. Science.
Life science cert, but sometimes he'll do a physical science here and there.
Nothing that's producing a lack of certified coverage.
We are, um, the job is posted.
Okay, all in favor. Six zero, motion carries.
Superintendent Corey, I'm writing to formally resign from my position as teacher at Hollis Brookline High School effective June 30th, 2025. I accepted the role of Director of Technology for SAU 41 and look forward to continuing to serve the Hollis Brookline School District in this new capacity. Thank you, John Boucher.
Great. And that would be a SAU position?
Correct.
So that would not be nominated tonight here. So we need a motion to accept the resignation of John Boucher as a high school science teacher at the high school with an effective date of June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. All those in favor? Six zero.
To SAU 41, with gratitude beyond measure for the opportunities I've had, I have found in being part of SAU 41 in general and Hollis Brookline High School in particular, I am submitting my resignation from my position as Assistant Principal at Hollis Brookline High School effective at the end of the 24-25 academic year. Resignations are supposed to be brief, straightforward, and avoid undue elaboration, which makes it difficult to express how much I have grown during my time here, how grateful I am for the role I have been allowed to play in this learning community, and how foundational Hollis Brookline has been in helping me become the educational leader I have hoped I could be when I decided to move from classroom teaching into administration. I leave not because I was dissatisfied or unhappy here, but because it seemed to be the right time to explore how another school system operates in order to become a more effective administrative leader, and because I could finally be not quite so far from home and my family on a daily basis. I deeply appreciate the staff, students, parents, school board, administration, and greater Hollis and Brookline communities for allowing me to be part of this community for as long as I have. With regret, Amanda Zeller.
Okay, so thank you. I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Amanda Zeller as the, as a high school assistant principal with an effective date of June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Before we vote, I just want to thank Amanda for her years of service, her times presenting here, and also for such a nice letter. All those, any other comments? All those in favor? I didn't even look at you guys over there. Six zero. You're gonna have to smack me, so actually count your votes.
Okay.
Six zero, motion carries.
Moving on to nominations. I would like to, I'm trying to make sure I can pronounce the name correctly. I would like to nominate Ariane Goslin.
Ariane.
Ariane Goslin, case manager at Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor's in psychology from Southern New Hampshire and a master's in general special ed, early childhood ed from Riviera University. Well, I would like to place her on master's step 13 for a salary of seventy-eight thousand four thirty-one.
So I ended up having to restate all this, but, um, so I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Ariane Goslin for the position of case manager at the high school at a step 13, master's step 13, and a salary of seventy-eight four thirty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Six zero, motion carries.
Ooh. You guys didn't help me out here. I would like to nominate Jessica Yanakopoulos. Case manager of Hollis Brookline High School. She has a bachelor in behavioral science from Grant State College and a master's in instruction and leadership from the University of New Hampshire. Um, I'd like to place her on master's step four for a salary of sixty-two thousand eight hundred two.
Great, so that's a superintendent-elect's nomination. I need a motion to accept the nomination of Jessica. We said it once, case manager, the position of case manager at the high school with, at a degree, master's step four, sixty-two thousand eight hundred and two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. All in favor?
Thank you.
I didn't ask if you had questions, but you voted, so six zero, motion carries.
Okay, so this one, I was told how to pronounce it early this morning and I forget.
Oh, it's, it's, it's Jody.
Jody, with a Y in the middle of it. Jody Demian, I'd like to nominate Jody Demian for ESOL teacher. Technically, it's a Hollis Brookline Middle School position, but the individual will be working district-wide. She has a bachelor's in English and Women's Studies from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in English Education from Plymouth State. We'd like to offer her master's plus thirty, step sixteen, for a salary of ninety thousand two hundred ninety-three. Sorry.
Okay, so. Wait, can we just, can we put the motion on the table first and then we can ask questions? I just want to do it in order. Okay, sorry.
Was she said it's a Hollis position?
I said the middle school.
Oh, I thought you said it was a Hollis.
Working district-wide. The middle school owns the position, but based on where students are.
I thought you said it was a Hollis position.
So I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Jody Demian for the, did I say that wrong?
No.
For, um, the position of ESOL at HBMS, um, and that would be a master's plus thirty, step sixteen, at a salary of ninety thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. More questions? All those in favor? And that is a six-zero vote.
I'd like to nominate Alexander Dietzel for the position of biology teacher at Hollis Brookline High School. He has a bachelor's in molecular biology from the University of New Hampshire and a master's in education in biology from Pace University. Alexander will be placed on master's step eleven for a salary of seventy-four thousand six hundred fifty-one.
Great, so I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Alexander Dietzel for biology teacher for the high school, um, master's step eleven, seventy-four thousand six hundred and fifty-one. Any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second. Seconded by Rob. Um, are there any questions on this? Is this, um, filling the, was?
This is filling, um.
Oh, when.
Camille Carson.
Camille Carson, okay. So there's still, there's still an opening in the science department because of the resignation from tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was just.
We had two resignations tonight, so we will have one opening.
Oh, two from science, yes, okay. Okay, so, so this person is filling a resignation from last month?
Correct.
And then, okay. All those in favor? Six zero. All those questions, sorry.
I would like to nominate HB alum Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at Hollis Brookline High School. Sarah comes with a bachelor's in biochemistry from Concordia University, a master's in education in curriculum and instruction from Southern New Hampshire University, and a master's in public health from Southern New Hampshire University. Like to place her at master's plus thirty, step ten, for a salary of seventy-seven thousand eight fifty-nine.
Okay, so that would be? Step ten?
Step ten.
That's scary.
I know. As my former student.
No. Master's plus ten. Okay. So, I need a motion to accept the superintendent-elect's nomination of Sarah Slater Sousa for the position of physics teacher at a, um, master's plus thirty, step ten, at seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and this would be at the high school.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? We're getting old, people.
No, we're not.
Is there one more?
Um, and then I would also like to bring forward a non-professional staff, but an administrator recommendation. I would like to nominate Cole Etten for the position of assistant principal at Hollis Brookline High School, the salary of one hundred three thousand.
So I need a motion to accept the nomination of Cole Etten as assistant principal of the high school at a salary of one hundred and three thousand.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. All those in, are there any comments? All those in favor? The language just doesn't come out. No, is there any other, are there any questions or comments? Welcome to the district, Cole. Well, all those in favor? Six zero. Okay, so, six zero, so motion carries. So, but I don't have him, I don't have to sign.
You don't have to sign, no, just professional stuff.
Okay, okay. All right, um, is there anything else for correspondence?
Nope.
So I do need to appoint a process observer, and I haven't made a little schedule yet because I'm falling down on that, so who would like to do it tonight? Anybody, anybody? Tom just pointed to Rob, man, that's so mean. Okay, Rob, would you mind?
He's really good at it.
You are really good at it, okay, thank you. And then also, um, I'd like to make some committee appointments. This seems to be the point in the, um, in the outline that Dawn gave me. So, uh, we already have Amy Kellner doing SAU policy. We, she was voluntold. And then those were already approved at the SAU Board, and the SAU 41 Spec Committee is Cindy and I. So we have a waiting subcommittee position, which is new. That was a, Tim sort of said that we needed to redo this, so I assume this is gonna happen, but I just need to name instructional practices steering committee. I think Krista and I were on that. I'm willing to do it again. Were you on it? You can do two or three, so, and there's grading and assessment. Krista was on that with Beth. And then advisory, I don't believe we need a subcommittee anymore.
I don't think so.
There's no advisory subcommittee, but there's some other things, hold on. Don't, we've already.
One of the other ones closed too, didn't it?
Um, I don't think, waiting was closed, but then.
But we're reopening.
But then we had a meeting to reopen it. So the stipends subcommittee, Cindy, you've been doing that, are you okay to continue doing that?
Yes.
Okay, so Cindy's on, gonna do that, that's, I'm gonna appoint Cindy. Kate's doing SAU wellness, I did the superintendent exit interview committee, and then the town of Hollis approved a committee, which is called, I think they're calling it a capital improvement plan committee, and they're asking that a co-op board member sit on that, but it has to be a Hollis co-op board member, so Rob has asked, has agreed to do that. They also, we placed on committee last month, we did manifests and facilities, and we did budget and all of those. So I just need a waiting person, or two, whoever.
I'd like to be on one of those.
Do you want to do the steering, grading and assessment, or waiting?
I'd like to stay on the steering.
Okay, so I'm gonna say.
Steering doesn't really meet on any regular basis.
Okay.
Be occasional, but I'd like to be on either the waiting or the grading, I'm not sure what it's okay.
Grading. I think grading and assessment's gonna be a, I was gonna end up being more, um, I feel like there might be some plans for the new assistant superintendent to get involved in that, and I think that would be a good place for you. So that, is that good, Tom? Does anybody want to do, do waiting? The waiting?
I'll do waiting, I did it before.
It's usually, it's usually the two on the.
Yeah, I, I can take more people if anybody wants more. Like, we can put two people on each one of these. I just need you to tell me what you want to do. If not, one is fine.
Can you explain a little bit about?
So the waiting subcommittee is looking at how we wait classes. So we, we decided, we had a waiting sub, so instructional practices steering goes in and meets, and, and there's just initiatives that the school may be looking at in terms of how we instruct and how we do instruction. And so one of the, and how we grade and how we assess, so one of the subcommittees that was formed was a waiting subcommittee to look at whether or not we should continue to wait classes, should continue to give a higher grade level for an AP class versus, you know, give a grade a higher weight. That committee ended because we recommended that we continue waiting. However, this year, there's been some questions as to how we wait, like what should we be waiting? Why do we wait this? Why don't we wait that? Why don't we wait this more? And so that was Tim's take after getting some feedback from, I think.
Angelina Costa.
From student, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so from a student. And so he wanted to kind of revisit it. He's leaving, I don't know if the new principal's gonna have a lot of impetus to do this, but I do think it would be good for us to have someone, a couple people on it in case it gets going. It's not a, it's a good topic, it will not be, I think it'll probably be just an investigation for a little while, and then it'll dissolve. So you're gonna do that, Amy, all right?
Yep.
And then grading and assessment is a committee that was under, has been in process for, I think, two or three years. It has, it's, I'm gonna say it, the wheels have been spinning in this committee, and really, this is about how we grade, how we assess, what, what we're.
Purpose of grading.
The purpose of grading. And then also, there's a lot of questions about whether we should be letting kids retake tests, should we be looking more at competencies? Like, there's all those kinds of very heavy, thought-provoking topics that is the reason the committee's been kind of spinning. And so, um, but maybe some new direction and some new people will make it so that it's a little bit more.
Who was, who did it before?
I believe one of the assistant principals was, I think the, Amanda, I think she's leaving, so. But Krista was on it, and Beth is on it, so I'm gonna keep Beth on it because I don't want to kick her off and she's not here, and so we'll just appoint, we'll appoint, so I just want Dawn to know what we're appointing. So Cindy and Amy for waiting subcommittee, Tom and Holly for instructional practices steering committee, and we just steer all these committees. Grading and assessment will be Tom and Beth. Cindy will do stipend subcommittee, and then Rob is going to be our, um, capital improvement plan person representative on the town committee, which makes sense because you're on facilities as well. So that works really well.
Well, that's what I thought.
I thought it did too. So, does that, does that cover all the committees? Do I, am I missing any? You have your manifest set, right? Like, that's good, okay. So I just need a motion to approve those appointments as stated.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Cindy. And all those in favor? Seven zero, great.
Six.
Was it six? No, it's six, because there's only six of us here.
Yeah.
Okay. And Rob is serving as volunteer, he was voluntold. Okay, so now we've got to approve some minutes. Let's just keep moving on. That page is done, that page is done. All right, so I need to, what? Oh, we need to approve the minutes from the annual meeting. We did get them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so I need a motion to accept as presented the March 4th annual meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Rob. All those in favor? Six zero. Cindy, Rob. Okay, so now we have our organizational meeting last month with the following amendments. Page six, line 10, replace bet with b. Page 18, line five, replace pass with past, passed with past. Page 21, line one, replace precipitation with pars, participation, very different words. Page 25, line 43, replace values with valued. These are from the organizational meeting of April 9th. I need to make, I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Kate. You guys are racing to the, are there any questions or further amendments? All those in favor? Six zero. And then I need a motion to accept the non-public minutes from April 9th. I need a motion to accept them.
So moved.
And the second?
Yes.
Rob? Okay, non-public minutes, all of those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, six zero. Motion carries, great. Okay, so now it is now six twenty-five. Um, I'm a little bit late, but I would like to, um, open the floor for public input. If you have input that you'd like to share, um, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We would like that input to be focused on items included on the agenda. Um, the public input period is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion, but rather an opportunity for the board to hear from residents before acting on agenda items. We open the floor and we, um, keep it open for half an hour, but we do continue on with our meeting during the half an hour. So I'm opening the floor now at six twenty-six PM, and it will be closed at six fifty-six PM. Well, actually, it'll probably close like sometime after six fifty-six, because I'll forget, but it'll close sometime around there, so. Is there anyone? I see some public, but nobody's coming up. Okay, great. Well, you're welcome to come up anytime in the next half hour. Okay.
Say hello.
Say hello, hi. So it seems that we have a student here, and that's great, this is Maggie, right?
Yes.
And you'll be doing a student report for us. Would you like to go first before we do principals' reports, or do you want to wait until after the principals?
Um, I'll go after principals.
And I did say Maggie, right? Yes, sometimes I confuse Maggie and Maddie, so it's okay. All right, so you'll go first, is that what you said? Or you'll wait till after?
I'll go after.
Thank you. All right, so we have three reports, we have the athletics report, the middle school principal report, and the high school. So I think, Patrick, you doing them all?
I can do my best, but I do think there's some high school things that.
So is, is Tim on his way?
He should be here soon.
Okay, so why don't we do?
He said six fifteen, so.
Can you do athletics?
Absolutely.
Okay, can you do athletics and, um, middle school, and then?
He's nine minutes out.
He's nine minutes away?
Yeah.
So I got nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
That's a long middle school board report.
It's between the two of us.
Don't you have a lot?
Sounds good.
Weren't there a lot of people on your, on your, wasn't there a huge list of students? Or was that you, or was that Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can go through those students, like.
Sure.
That were involved in all that.
Sure, I have a nice little video there, we could, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, that's great. Can we start with Mr. Bumpus's report?
We can start with Mr. Bumpus's.
That's great.
Uh, high school athletics, uh, just like everybody else in this area, was hit by the poor weather at the start of May, and a lot of games were postponed. Nonetheless, uh, teams are off to a strong start. Boys tennis, boys volleyball are both undefeated. Boys baseball carries a seven-and-two record. Boys lacrosse is seven-and-three, their only loss coming to top seeded Dairy Field in a close contest. Uh, girls tennis looks strong, uh, to make a strong push, holding a six-and-four record, they're in sixth place. Uh, both softball, girls, uh, softball and lacrosse, teams have started off with a rocky start, but they're looking to make the playoffs, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Outdoor track team has had plenty of records broken this, uh, spring. Uh, several student athletes qualified for the Division II state meet, uh, held at the end of the month, and the Unified Track Team will wrap up their season with their second of two home meets on Tuesday, May 20th, which was yesterday, uh, where they hosted Merrimack, Concord, and Nashua South. I did get some positive reports about our middle schoolers being positive, uh, attendees yesterday, which is always great to hear, and it was, uh, it sounds like it was another great meet, uh, hosted by the Unified Track Team at the high school. Uh, middle school athletics, over a hundred and fifty student athletes participating, uh, at HBMS, thriving with energy, talent, and teamwork. Baseball and softball are showing strong determination, making games very exciting. Students participating in track continue to shine with impressive performances, boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse. The girls team, I know, is doing really well, and the boys are having a strong season, uh, demonstrating remarkable growth throughout the season. Both look forward to the playoffs this spring. End of year sports awards, uh, taking place on Monday, June 16th at six.
It's my mom's birthday, just for everyone to know.
Good to know.
Happy birthday to June.
Happy birthday, June. My mother's is a week before, so. Uh, six PM, uh, in the HBHS auditorium. Uh, we're looking forward to a night of celebrating our senior award winners and state champions and runner, runner-up teams to cap off a great year in the athletics department. Athletic trainer position, the athletic department has interviews set up for an open athletic trainer position on Thursday, May 29th, and are confident that the position will be filled prior to the start of the upcoming fiscal year. Fall sports 2025, it's hard to believe, spring season is still plugging along, but the athletic department is preparing for the fall of 2025 season already. Head coaching position's filled, preseason meetings, uh, been occurring, tryout schedules are being finalized, and fall sports registrations are slated to open via arbiter sports at both schools on Monday, June 2nd. Looks like they recently hired a high school boys soccer head coach.
Former HB student as well.
Good to know.
Rick Carvalho.
Rick Carvalho, thank you. Sounding that name out in my head before I tried to read it. Uh, district coaching positions, openings there at the high school and one at the middle school.
So just like a question, and Patrick, you're not gonna be able to answer this, but I'm kind of asking the general population of people who have kids who've gone through the schools and the sports. So I know, I happened to see on Facebook today that the boys lacrosse team is doing really well, and so there's a chance that their championship game will be on, um, graduation.
Okay.
And that has happened before with baseball and with sock, with volleyball.
And track.
And track. So if we were, one of the things we talked about last month was thinking about moving graduation to Friday night. Do we know if traditionally there's something on Friday night of our weekend of graduation that's usually like, would be a conflict? Because it, it is really hard, like, we've had kids have to choose, like, I think, you know, they've had to choose to not go to like, the, the regional, like, meet, track meet because of.
New England.
What?
New England.
New England, thank you. Um, New England's has happened, and they haven't been able to go to that because they'd rather go to their graduation, or they go to the meet and not go to their graduation. Um, I know that it's very stressful on families when like graduation's happening, but you've got to leave and race to Exeter to be in the lacrosse meet, or, but then there's also some added fun to that, too, like graduation day, you're winning, you're potentially winning your baseball tournament. So I just was wondering if we know if Friday night we'd have that same level of conflict.
I will get that, thank you.
Info for you. Just information, because we have that calendar issue that we're thinking about, and I also am stating all this because all the public who's watching, you know, I want them to be keyed in on this potential change so that they're not surprised by it.
Yeah, so the district, um, calendar shows graduation possibly on Friday night, possibly Saturday morning.
Right. But that being said, are there any other comments on the, um, on the, that, this, the athletic report?
I have a question, is the, uh, is the trainer a staff position or a stipend-in position?
Staff.
We have a resignation like.
Yes, a while ago.
Yeah, it was like December. Uh, I think it came to our November meeting.
So we've been without a trainer during that period?
We have, um, we have paid for training services. But yes, we've been without a trainer, correct.
And there's a lot of coaching openings, just for those people out there watching, there's a lot, just quite a few, right?
So many opportunities.
So many opportunities. Are there any other comments? Well, congratulations, it sounds like the spring season is going really well. I mean, that's when the, when those things happen, when you're like, oh, they could be at the championship game on graduation. That's a really good thing, but.
Hard choice to make.
Well, they, they can go usually, but it's just hard.
Okay, thank you. How about the middle school report?
Sure. Uh, just reporting out on the DC trip last month, uh, another great success, um, dates a hundred and sixty-five students, uh, went down and came back. I use that joke every year and I will as long as, uh, we bring them down and we bring them back.
Did anyone come back early?
This year? One. I'm looking at somebody that actually attended this year.
Yeah.
Yes, one. Uh, just an overview of the trip again, highlights the re-flaying ceremony, uh, which, uh, below the, this section, you'll see a video that one of the, uh, parent chaperones, uh, who was also a nurse on the trip, Joe McWigan, put together. Uh, first time I watched it, uh, I found myself getting a little, uh, hitting the feels. Uh, it's just a powerful, uh, ceremony and our students really doing a great job at that ceremony and, um, kudos to the two students who stepped up, who had parents, uh, who have parents that are veterans. And also the teaching staff felt like it was an appropriate year to have seventh grade social studies teacher Sue Conley, who is retiring from HB at the end of this year, participate in the re-flaying ceremony as well. And, uh, she was very appreciative and I thought that was a nice addition to the, to the trip and, um, a nice way to send off Mrs. Conley.
It's that link right there.
Right above the photo.
Right above the photo. Sorry. Uh, continuing on with some, uh, DC rock projects. Uh, I guess this used to happen many years ago, uh, where eighth grade rocks would work together on a project, a mon, a memorial project that they would bring down to DC. Um, and Christine Page, one of our reading specialists here, uh, and her rock group, um, did a really nice job finding a local veteran, uh, who unfortunately passed away during his, uh, time in the service. Uh, did a lot of research, reached out to, uh, New Boston, um, Historical Society and was connected with, uh, family members of the individual who, who, uh, perished in nineteen seventy. Um, and they actually got some artifacts put into the New Boston Hiscore, Historical Society, uh, made connections with, uh, it looks like their names are Mrs. Bowden and Ms. Davis. Um, and it was just a really positive, uh, addition to the DC project, getting students ready and excited about the trip, but also a local connection for our students as well. So, uh, big shout out to Mrs. Page and her rock, uh, for really taking on that project, uh, seriously and then with some passion and doing a really nice job there. So just wanted to highlight that. Uh, we recently had a seventh grade science lab where, uh, a sibling of our seventh grade science teacher, Mrs. Delay, her, her sister is a doctor, Dr. Kate Delay, uh, she came in to talk about her work in Greenland and Antarctica, tracking cosmic subatomic particles. Students got to see the tracks of subatomic particles zipping through the fog of a cloud chamber. They were able to build a frame, uh, framework of how small these particles are in comparison to the atoms they built and the cells the students have seen under microscopes this year. Um, I did have to read from that directly because I'm still learning, uh, from our grade, seventh grade group, uh, but it was a really great experience, uh, and the students really seemed to enjoy it. Got to check in myself and big shout out to our seventh grade science teachers. Uh, band and chorus performances, uh, last weekend, there was a big performance, uh, I think in the cell central district, which, uh, was at Wyndham High School. And over the last couple of weeks, last month or so, uh, students have been really putting in a lot of work for these, uh, honor band course, uh, honors band concerts, um, and choir concert as well, uh, back in April. So just wanted to highlight, uh, all their effort and their work and their recognition. Um, great group and thank you, Mrs. Knault, Ms. Knault and Ms. Costa, our chorus and band teachers. Jumping down to the HBMS course request numbers, which are also included, um, and then I did include this year, New Hampshire SAS opt-out numbers. We had twenty-four total opt-outs, uh, eight seventh grade students and sixteen eighth grade students. And I believe that is just about at the five percent, a little bit over that five percent mark.
So if they're over five percent, anyone over five percent gets factored in as zero.
Correct.
So we do have over five, like, we did go over.
Yes.
So we have a few zeros factoring into our-
Yep.
New Hampshire SAS scores for seventh and eighth grade.
Much better than years prior, uh, which I really appreciate students and parents, uh, taking on this year and, and trying to take on the test, uh, but yeah, we did hit that five percent threshold.
Thank you very much for that.
Of course. You can ask questions.
Does middle school have the same situation where they have multiple versions of the test that get distributed randomly, or is that just for the subject matter?
Oh, no, so it's computer adaptive, so, um, the students are gonna see different, um, different questions, different prompts, um, different pieces of writing, but, uh, but-
It's not like elective situations.
Correct. Yeah, it's all math, it's all English, it's all a writing prompt.
In theory, it's all appropriate?
Yes, um, so from personal experience, there was an argument about, um, a writing prompt that stated, um, should homework exist or not? And then maybe a sibling got, in the same grade level, a writing prompt that was, um, asking for something far more intellectual. So there's a little fighting in the household, but, um, but they're still writing and it's not a different content area.
And the same thing for the science test, where there's three science tests that students could get, even though we only have two grades and we focus on, um-
So science is different because there are different content areas, because we teach, you know, life science in grade seven, and then we teach your earth space in eight, and they might have, um, a test that's focused on chemistry.
Correct.
Completely outside of what they've learned.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, so different students may get tested on different science subjects.
Correct.
Right.
It's not may, they will, yeah.
Yes.
So New Hampshire SAS for seventh and eighth grade is a math test, a English language, reading test, and a science.
And a writing, science is only eighth grade.
Science is only in eighth grade?
Yep.
And writing, and is writing separate from reading?
Yeah.
Writing and reading are put into the ELA category, but we do those separate, because they're pretty rigorous questions.
Sure, sure.
And there's three different types of-
Okay.
-writing assessments that they could get, argumentative, infotext, and I'm forgetting the third one, but-
Do they, are their scores combined, reading and writing?
Correct, yes.
They're combined.
Okay.
But they sit down and take writing separate than when they sit down and take reading?
Yes.
Is it our contention that some of the subject matter in the science portion of the eighth grade testing is testing information that our students have not yet been exposed to?
Not that they haven't been exposed to, but potentially they haven't been exposed to it since sixth grade.
Whereas others may have-
Something they just saw this year. Yep.
And when you have time, if you have time, there is practice tests on the New Hampshire SAS website, I can send you guys a link, and it shows you the type of questions that they do get on the test, and it, I think it would be interesting to see what you thought of those questions.
Do we have the ability to see if there is a correlation between score and which test version the student had?
Um, so we can track by standard, performance by, like, by content area, and so we, we definitely see a correlation between what they have had the farthest away from when they're testing, and that's where they perform the lowest.
I'm just wondering if we have the ability to make an argument going to whoever it is that dictates the test, I assume it's either the State Department of Education or DOE, says, look, here is hard evidence that the test methodology is not appropriate, or that, or conversely, if they say, no, this is by the time someone reaches eighth grade, they should have full retained competency at this level, then they're saying that we're not, that what we're teaching is not right. But I wanna see if there's a way to, to quantify the level of disconnect between test methodology and our performance.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's my, it's been my argument for twenty years. Um, in Massachusetts, you take a subject-based test based on the course you're in. Um, and then now, of course, that, that, it's not required and they don't have to test anymore for graduation, but, um-
I knew it was, I knew it was a case in the high school where there's electives, I didn't, I didn't realize it was also in the middle school, test sequence as well. Who, who does generate those tests?
Um, Cambrium.
They, they buy them, they just buy them?
Yep, so there's a consortium, multiple states can buy into the same, same test bank, if you will.
Can we pick a different test?
Right, we can. I mean, we, if you recall, we switched from New Hampshire SAS to SATs, but that's a state level decision. It's passed down from our state assessment office down to us.
But are there, are there alternatives that we could petition to use for middle school?
No.
And we also have our eighth graders take the PSAT. Do the, the seventh graders don't take it though.
Nope.
So our eighth graders take the PSAT, they take the reading, the ELA SAS, the math SAS and the science SAS.
In eighth grade, yes.
All eighth grades, it's a heavy testing year.
How much time, how many days do you think we can totally devote to both testing and testing specific crap?
So seventh grade, we dedicate three days, one for math, one for reading, one for ELA. In eighth grade, we dedicate a day for PSATs in October, and then in, uh, this time of year, we dedicate four, ELA, reading, writing, math, science.
So five days total?
Five days total. Well, not full days. We, we try and create a bell schedule that, um, allows sufficient time for everybody to complete the test without being stressed about time constraints. Uh, so we found that to be about three hours because there are students that do require extended time, but then if those students are testing and they're not having access to their regular ed classes, that's really not best practice. So we've really just tried to carve out enough time for all students to have, uh, sufficient time to finish the test, and we found that to be about three hours of testing, and then they go to classes after. But some feedback we get from students is they're tired after tests.
Other than fulfilling your application to the state, what value do we get from tests?
Um, it currently is helping us, uh, reflect on our, our practices, what we're doing in our classrooms, our curriculum, because, um, even though there are some questions and concerns about the validity, uh, there is some good information to see generally how our hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety students are doing each year, uh, and it gives a nice report on standards and how the, the general population do with regards to those standards, so.
So when you see a, a result that has a proficiency that a raw number looks ugly, so you get a number, say, between fifty and seventy percent, and you feel you've got students who are at the top of their game in general, then what's the impact? Do you just take that and strike? How do you use the scores, the actual scores?
For our students? That's something, some other, some other things that we're talking about at, at our building right now. How can we better meet the needs of our tier-two, tier-three students, our level-one and our lever, level-two performers? What are we doing during our class instruction? What are we doing during skills to better meet the needs of those students? And at the beginning of the year, uh, sixth grade principals send me this current scores for our current sixth grade students, and we're really trying to be a lot more intentional next year with, uh, especially skills to, to work with those students individually that are still struggling on those tests.
Thank you.
And are the tests that they're taking in seventh and eighth grade, are they continuation of the same types of tests that they took through elementary school? Are you seeing like, so are you able to say, see growth or see difference, even i- if you drill down into like individual students who are in your tier one, is that right? Tier one, it would be your students who might be struggling?
Yep.
Do you're able to drill into that and see if those kids are making improvements, even if they're not proficient, if they're improving upon their, does that, does the test help with that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's just one measure.
I know, because sometimes kids are just really bad, some kids are just not good testing.
Correct.
And they might be performing really well in the, in the environment, but they're not.
Yeah, and those are conversations that, uh, I'm having with Gina and Lauren, just more progress monitoring tools, not just this one New Hampshire SAS test that's-
I got you.
That's stressful, um, but, yeah.
Thank you for all of that.
Of course.
So, um, moving on, Patrick, could you cover, thank you, welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
Good to see you. How are you?
Nice to see you.
Could you just kind of give us a quick review of your course numbers? I do wanna, I, you maybe are gonna say this, but I do wanna clarify for the public that we look at course requests in May, and then in October, we look at actual numbers of kids in courses, and course requests are what kids have asked for to take, um, and that's how the principals make their decisions, and the building leader makes decisions. Um, obviously, in the middle school, you have fewer-
Yeah.
Like, less leeway in what you can do, but-
The only course request that we really allow in the middle school is around, uh, reading world language, uh, band, and then, uh, math as well. So that's kind of the model that we follow. Uh, everything is pretty much prescribed for students. Um, so just diving right into our band numbers, there's, uh, a nice increase in our, uh, band requests, uh, since, I guess, the last few years. Um, chorus is always a sought-out, uh, class, um, but those are the requests we get. We try and make suggestions on how many sections we'll have for each respective course, and to try and keep that class size, um, obviously below policy twenty-five, uh, but as low as we can, um, just because that, we find that to be best practice. Uh, so as you go down, you'll just see the different requests for the different courses, and then we use that number to drive our suggestion for how many sections we offer next year, and you should see class sizes, uh, those are averages for those, uh, you know, each section offered. Um, so again, you should see them below twenty-five. The one that sticks out is our geometry eight, um, and that's right at twenty-five. That is one of our, uh, you know, advanced math courses, geometry eight, um, and everything below- uh, is, yeah, just prescribed from there on out. So I'm certainly open to questions, um, if you have them, round our course, uh, requests.
Any questions?
I just, sorry, I'm just, I'm just a question. Sometimes we see low, low course, uh, low, um, student counts, class size. The impression that I've gotten in the past is that it's just a function of the way you divide it in the middle school. It's a little bit different than in the high school, you've got electives and you could essentially eliminate a class. I get the impression that it just ebbs and flows based on class size more than anything, and you look more for balance than-
Yeah.
Raw numbers, is that, is that a, a, a correct viewpoint?
Uh, yes, but some of those really small numbers, like read one eighty and specialized reading, those, a lot of-
They're folded into other areas too, don't they sometimes?
Yeah, and they're, they're really small groups, they are-
Yeah, I'm thinking about whether you've got nine or whether you've got fourteen as an average size, in part just maps out to what that, that, that cohort happens to be that year.
Correct, yep.
Because I know a lot of times people look at isolated classes, but you say, okay, you've got that isolated class, if we combine sections and made them bigger, you just have a teacher who's gonna not do something for a period of time.
Yeah, and for s-
Something doesn't lend it well to that either, does it?
I'm sorry, was that last question?
Something structure does not lend itself well to that.
No, when you-
Having somebody just set out a section.
Correct, yeah, and that, I, that will never happen in the middle school, at least, uh, what I'm thinking, but if you're looking at Spanish, the fourteen, some years, some grades are, are really into French, others, they're really into Spanish. Uh, so that's why those numbers can fluctuate. Um, just looking down below, next year, it looks like we have a really strong seventh grade class in, in math. We have four potential sections of, uh, pre-algebra in seventh grade, uh, which isn't the case every year, and that's gonna impact math seven and math, uh, seven algebra. Um, so I think your thinking is spot on, that some years it does ebb and flow and, and changes.
Are you still getting any students up to the high school for math this year?
Nope.
But they can take geometry now in eighth grade, I mean, they could years ago.
But they take it here.
They take it here, right, right.
Will you take one section, done year-long class?
Yes. The only sections that are not year-long for us are, uh, the one-
The specials, right?
The specials, correct. Uh, health, art, um, computers and tech ed.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Patrick.
Of course.
Um, Tim?
Would you like me to start with the course enrollings?
You just do however you want. You, you go, you, but Maggie was waiting to go after you, so we did, we did invite her to go before you, but she wanted to go after you.
Okay. All right, I'll start off, uh, with my, um, board report.
Thank you, Patrick, by the way, did I not say thank you?
You did, thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Duval and our AP government students who traveled to, uh, Washington, DC for the National We the People Competition. Uh, it was, um, a great event. Uh, everyone who attended, um, enjoyed the experience, uh, traveling down to DC, and we are very proud of one particular group who took home, uh, the top recognition for a specific unit, uh, and those who have served on to the panels before, um, unit six, uh, was this group's, um, um, championship, uh, that they brought home, so Anthony Landzone, Jacob Bryan and Owen Bodett. Uh, it's, uh, to our knowledge, only the second time in a New Hampshire school has won this award, so, uh, really proud of Mr. Duval and our students.
What's unit six?
Off the top of my head, uh, Max, Max, you remember?
So, do you know how the We the People structure works? So there's six units and there's typically three students in each, and you're told to prepare, in each unit, there's also three separate sub-questions, and you don't know which question you're going to be asked going into your hearing, so you prepare a four-minute opening statement and a six-minute, um, Q and A, which they can ask you anything you want. So unit six was more focused on modern-day things, um, so they were evaluating a lot of the modern-day issues that we face and, so, yeah.
So a unit is a specific subject?
Mm-hmm.
And then this?
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so congratulations to our We the People, uh, the whole group. And, uh, included in the board packet is the Quebec City Trip Curricular Connections at the April Board Meeting. There was a request for, uh, some more information on how the trip will connect back to the, um, the curriculum, the French curriculum, so, uh, that's there, happy to discuss further for, um, if the board has had the opportunity, uh, to review and evaluate, uh, I, I think we're looking for, uh, a vote on-
Yeah, that's on, it's in our outline, we're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay, um, I know Patrick talked about his, uh, SAS scores, uh, and, uh, upon request, I do have our SAT and SAS opt-out data. I know we had talked about in depth about the impact that those zeros have, uh, anything under, Gina, correct me wrong, ninety-five percent?
Correct, yep.
Ninety-five percent, uh, is counted as a zero. Uh, while we do see the data through College Board for our SATs, uh, the raw data and how our students perform, uh, not including that, uh, the SAS, uh, information can sometimes be a little mis, misleading, uh, to evaluate where our students are, and that's specifically the science test in grade eleven, so our grade eleven-
Yeah, we have thirty percent opt-out there.
Yep, about thirty, thirty percent of our students opt-out, so.
That really went?
Skews significantly, yeah.
So just quickly on the SAT scores, um, so the ten percent opt-out, those going as zeros on the state level testing, like, when they look at from the state level?
When they read, um, achievement data, achievement data includes zeros.
Okay, and then the College Board, however, we can pull-
Correct.
What our average is.
Mm-hmm.
And so we, uh, public input is now closed. And so we, uh, public input is now closed. So at six fifty-six, um, okay, and so what do we report on?
But when I report the, you know how our students do on SATs, and when the high school puts out, um-
The SAT scores, like on the school profile?
The score on school profile, that is our students who took the test, how, how they did.
Okay, great.
When the state reports proficiency, it is-
They, correct.
They take the zero.
And proficiency data is, um, looks to be what will be required to be put, um, on the warrant next year.
Is it gonna be required?
At this moment, it looks like that's what's gonna happen.
Okay, how are they, how are we gonna put that on the warrant?
I don't know how it's gonna fit, but, it doesn't really, uh, matter for an annual meeting district, but.
Okay, sorry, I, I'm sorry to get way late on that.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, congratulations to our robotics team, um, for the first time since twenty-twenty-two, our team traveled to the world competition down in Houston, and, uh, our students came home with a very respectable twenty-first place out of seventy-six teams, uh, again, the international competition, so, super proud of our, uh, of our students who, um, are still involved in some postseason competitions, but this is kind of the, uh, the World Series, uh, if you may, of the, uh, robotics world, so congratulations to our, um, robotics, uh, first team. Uh, I have, uh, received two requests, two separate requests for, to host foreign exchange students next year. Uh, the first prospective student, uh, is affiliated with our local Rotary Youth Exchange Program, which I'm sure, uh, most, if not all, of you are familiar with, uh, we have, um, partnered with, um, several times over the years. Uh, at one point in time, it was, um, kind of the exclusive relationship. Uh, we did, however, a couple of years ago, uh, open up, um, the, uh, the policy, and, uh, we are allowed, the board does, uh, is allowed to approve up to three different, um, foreign exchange students annually, and, uh, we did receive a second request, and this other request, uh, was through an, uh, an exchange program called EF Exchange Program, uh, which is affiliated with, like, EF doors, which we've used for international travel before, um, and both, uh, our local Rotary, uh, Youth Exchange Program, as well as the EF Exchange Program, does meet, uh, the requirements within our JFAB, uh, policy. Uh, they do meet the, uh, they are affiliated with the, um, Council on Standards for International Exchange Travel, uh, and students are on J-one visa, um, so, uh, they do meet our standards, and, uh, while the Rotary, uh, student, the Rotary Exchange student, um, I don't think necessarily needs a vote, because we have approved that in the past, uh, I was looking for the nod, uh, for acceptance of the EF Exchange Program, or the student affiliate.
So you'd like a vote on that tonight?
I would.
Okay. I'll ask the board if they wanna go on, see how they feel.
That'd be great. All right, um, we had, uh, just a side note, we had our Walk for Change Day today, uh, as part of our, um, celebration of, uh, Mental Health Month, um, we have some big, uh, things happening coming up. We have seniors' last day of classes, uh, next Friday, the thirtieth, um, we, the following week is senior week. We, uh, initiated a new tradition last year, where our graduates, uh, get an opportunity to go down to the elementary schools in Hollis and in Brookline, uh, CSDA and Hughes, and, um, visit with their, um, their, their elementary school teachers and administrators, and, um, uh, we have a couple senior trips that week, uh, we're doing the Boston Harbor Boat Cruise on that Monday, um, and then later on in the week, uh, we're gonna head down to, um, I think it's a Waltham, uh, Supercharge, the indoor, kinda fun park, go-karts and all that good stuff, so, uh, we have our Class Day Awards and Senior Night Awards on the Wednesday of that week, that's the fourth, and all eyes on Saturday, June seventh, at ten AM, uh, for graduation on the side field, so, really looking forward to that. Uh, we're gonna host, uh, the Rising Freshmen on Friday, uh, June thirteenth, uh, and then the exam schedule, uh, starts on the twelfth and runs through the seventeenth, so, um, some pretty exciting stuff, uh, on the, on the horizon. I'm open to any questions on the board report, and then I'll obviously, uh, go through the enrollment numbers, um, afterwards.
Are there any questions on the, on Tim's board report that we didn't already ask? So I just wanna say, first of all, I wanna congratulate all the musicians from Hollis Brookline Middle School. That was quite the list, an extensive list of musicians, and I meant to say that. Um, and then, obviously, I always like to try to take a moment and, you know, extend the board's congratulations, although I don't speak for the board, but as chair of the board, I feel like it's okay to say that we, um, wanna congratulate Anthony?
I'm sorry, it's, yeah, Anthony.
Is it Anthony? Okay, Anthony, Jacob, and Owen, um, and then, I think, the robotics team. It's really great to see that movement there, I wanna congratulate those kids on their unit six award at the, um, uh, Um, We the People, and Mr. Duval for all of his work on that. Um, we can, if the board is okay, I'd like to hear if anybody has a problem with us adding a vote on the exchange program, just so that we can get that, um, we don't like to vote the same day as something's been presented, but we do, um, have exchange students frequently, so it would be nice to get that taken care of, um, so I'm not hearing from anybody, so we will put that, I have, uh, three deliberative items to do, um, for you, um, should we do those now? Would you guys like to do those now, and then he'll to, talk about his numbers? I have, I have the, um-
Question for deliberations?
I just have them here, so do you wanna do them in deliberations, or do you wanna do them now?
I just don't know what, I'll turn it.
Dawn put them in the, all, she, she put them in the, uh, underneath principal's report, because they're based on his principal's report, so I'll just do them now. I need a motion to approve the field trip request for the World Language Department students to travel to Quebec, Canada, February sixth, twenty-twenty-six through February eighth, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions on this? Yes?
First of all, thank you for putting together the, the tie-in curriculum activity, whatever you wanna call that before. Just my, my general impression, I would, I thought it was a little bit light on the activities actually being tied to, I understand it's an immersion kind of situation, but in the past, we've seen some academic components that didn't seem to be present in this one, and that in itself isn't, it's not gonna close, and I just think that there might be opportunities, whether it be visiting a, a school that's, that's in the, the region, or attending some activity, or aligning the timing possible with some sort of educational component. That's the kind of things I've often seen done in the past, and attended before. But perhaps the bigger thing is, uh, my question about financial support for students who would like to attend, but for whom the expense is, uh, not manageable. For many years, I've, I've asked this question continuously, I don't know if control, if funds available in general, for, which is not truly the gated item, um, I've gotten direct input from board members who's not here tonight, as well as, um, some feedback from some parents that, um, specifically relates to a previous one, but that somewhat, that, that people went forward trying to get financial assistance, and that financial assistance had, was problematic in two regards, one is the amount of assistance that was available was a very small portion of the total cost, and the other is that there were unique requirements placed upon the student to essentially qualify for merit-based scholarship as opposed to a need-based assistance, and if that's the case, um, that's very concerning to me.
Are there any, is there any answer to that or feedback on that?
I'm not familiar with the specific one that was merit-based.
That was related to the, uh, who, I think that was the one for the honors choir, the music thing, that was it?
New Orleans?
Oh, to New Orleans?
Uh, I don't know where it was, they said it was.
This year?
The recent one to New Orleans?
It was three thousand dollars was, uh, the cost, the total amount of money that was potentially available was five hundred dollars. And, um, the requirement to do it required that the, the student submit an essay justifying-
So it's like a scholarship, not a-
Participating, um, one parent apparently, and this is, it's not firsthand information, but one, one parent, had two children that wanted to attend, and the, the total cost was just out of the realm.
Would it be helpful to you if we took this up in the policy committee? Is that an appropriate place for something, where we could develop a policy related to, um, I mean, it's not a required policy, it would be our own policy, but a policy related to maybe just a, a statement of what our policy is on how, how that should work, and then maybe a, a procedure could be developed after that? Would that be helpful, 'cause you, you asked that question a lot, and I agree with you, like, i- if it's, if it's more nebulous than what, you know?
This is the first time anyone's given me any feedback that was this explicit, that-
Yeah.
So I, I just, the reason I'm bringing it up right now is, we have, we're about to approve something
Mm-hmm.
in all likelihood. I would like, if the, if this does exist, I would like to start now to see if-
If we do a policy on it, would that be?
Identify options for students who qualify independent of ability to pay to participate.
I, um, I, so we've always talked about families who are eligible for aid because they cannot afford, and, um, we certainly have funding for that, funding it based on merit, I think is a whole other.
And that was, that was-
He does, he's not a fan of that idea, he doesn't want it to be merit-based.
I don't want it to be, that, that was-
But that's the feedback that he's getting.
The only option that was presented to the parent was that when they asked for assistance, they said, here, go talk to someone, I don't, but-
Okay.
Again, I don't know the details, and that's why I'm bringing it up in this context, because it's secondhand partial information, but the feedback was that the only option offered was scholarship for a relatively, um, small percentage of the cost and with a qualifying submission, so.
Right, and I'm just thinking that if it were a policy, then the board could debate whether or not the board feels like it should be merit-based, or it should be fi- financially need-based, like, we could develop a policy from the board level, not the procedures, not the specifics, but like a policy.
I like the idea too.
A great topic to bring up, can we do it in a timeframe that would allow it to be?
It won't fix this today, right?
Well, let's just look at-
It's next year, it could fix next, this trip, yeah.
It could fix next year, we could have it done by the end of the summer, maybe, I mean, you need to give us time, or at least first read by the end of the summer.
Yeah.
And then I think, once you start having those kinds of conversations, whoever's making those decisions in the, in the, will know what's happening, so.
It could well be that funding is available, but the people who are asked about it are not aware of the-
Right, exactly.
I don't know, it is, I just, I wanna take this opportunity to resurface the question.
And then I just wanna comment on the Quebec trip, 'cause you had a comment, um, so, I do believe it's over a weekend. I, I'm just really happy to see our foreign language kids getting an opportunity to go and experience Quebec, like, to experience, 'cause it's so interesting to me that we live, like, right, you know, six hours away, and it is, you can be fully immersed, and so, I understand what Tom's saying, but the, it's over a weekend, it's carnival, it's like the culture of Quebec, it's like their big event, and so, I think, um, I think it's fun, and it also gives kids an opportunity to really hear the French language, the Canadian French language spoken, so I'd like to at least say that, and I do think that, um, the staff put together a, a nice summary of what it can do for kids to just be there for a couple of days, so.
And do we have anything to, like, to make sure that the students can track around, have their documentation requirements? Is it part of the program?
I don't know.
It is for the England trip, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure the, yeah, it is.
They need to start early.
Yeah, they know, they know, yeah, and they can expire in the next six months, okay. So, any other questions on that? All those in favor, um, I'm calling the vote, so I've got six zero.
Didn't say in favor of what?
In favor of the Quebec trip, we already put the motion on the table, so, um, six-zero, motion carries. I also need a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of five thousand dollars from the New Hampshire Bar Foundation to assist students traveling to the National We the People Competition in Washington DC.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. So this was mentioned in the March board report, and we just simply, um, did not approve it.
Well, we doubled up, right?
Yeah, we were doubled up, exactly. So, any questions on that? New Hampshire Bar Foundation. All those in favor? Six-zero, great, and then we have one more.
A big thank you.
And a big thank you, thank you, sorry. I need a motion to approve a foreign exchange student from Spain affiliated with the EF Exchange Program to attend the Hollis Brookline High School during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year in accordance with policy JFABB.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any comments on that?
Is this approved by all administration?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Six-zero, so, moving on to the, um, second part of your report, which is class size, Tim?
Yep.
Maggie's saying, wait, why did I say I would go after?
So, uh, just to kind of review the format, uh, which, um, I think each year, we've gotten a little bit more information, or gotten a little bit better at targeting exactly what, um, information is helpful to see, so, uh, if you look, uh, all the way to the right, you'll see the individual section enrollments for this current school year, so you can use that to compare to what our projected enrollment sizes will be for next year. Um, I also included the average size, um, so, if, for example, you just look at the first line there, AP Computer Science A, we ran that with twenty-four students, uh, this year, which, by the way, is the max number, uh, for these computer science and engineering courses, uh, that's based on devices in the room, so, we have, uh, twenty-four, um, we ran that with twenty-four. This coming year, uh, there were fourteen requests, you may or may not recall, we had a request to add another computer science class, AP Computer Science class to the program of studies this past year, and that one, um, it was open to sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and we had thirty-one requests for that, so if you, uh, there is a mistake here, you see the projected class sizes in the spring, um, though, it's actually not thirty-one, there's only twenty-four, so, the, the, anything over twenty-four will, um, come back to twenty-four as the max size, so.
Hey, Tim, and this is projected class size for spring of twenty-twenty-five, right?
Yeah, sorry, twenty-five, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty-five, actually, twenty-six.
The current sections offered is what you think is gonna be next year, and the stuff in the right-
Is current, yeah.
In, are there the individual sections, if there's four numbers, that means there were four sections?
That's correct, yep. Um, so if you, um, uh, look down at the English classes as an example, so we are projected to have, um, five Excel English ten classes this coming school year, uh, whereas this past school year, we had three. Um, the, um, the class sizes are comparable, uh, we just happen to have, um, uh, uh, more students taking Excel, uh, English ten this coming year. So, um, I'm happy to, to go through, uh, the individual numbers, um, most fall within our, our policy, there's not too many glaring, um, section sizes that are significantly too small, or smaller than, uh, what we hope to achieve. Um, decisions are made in every department, uh, in collaboration with the department chairs and the administrator who oversees the department, to determine, for example, um, if you flip over and take a look at math, uh, there's always decisions to be made, uh, do you want a smaller s- you want smaller section sizes, and maybe your, um, your standard level, your, um, your Algebra one, um, do you want smaller numbers there, um, and maybe have higher numbers and say, if you look at calculus, we're running, we're running one section of calculus with twenty-five students. This past year, we had a similar number, we had twelve point five, uh, average, uh, eleven and fourteen, we ran two sections with the same exact number. But based on the situation, the way the cards, uh, fall, the, the chips fall that given year, uh, you make decisions based on what, uh, is best with those, with those requests.
And the important thing is that one outlier in a department isn't really gonna make you get rid of a teacher, you know? I mean, you have to have five, you have to have five light sections, really light sections, to remove a staff member. So when we look at this, we're looking at it from two lenses, one is, are we doing right by our students and offering what we need, and are our kids getting what they need and want, that's the most important lens, and how, are they getting the education they need? But then we also try to look at it from a budgeting perspective, but when you see one light class in the department that doesn't, that doesn't allow you to eliminate an entire position, and that's where cost savings would come from.
Yeah, and when decisions are made about, um, let's say you did have a, a, a section that was too small to run, and you decided that you weren't gonna run that class, you're gonna use that teacher's fifth prep, that their fifth class, you're gonna assign them elsewhere, and you might divide a, a larger number down, and you end up with, instead of nineteen students in a section, you end up with fourteen students in a section. Or, there's always those outliers, like your personal finance, uh, that does rotate departments, and sometimes is picked up by someone who, um, uh, might be a little shy on numbers, so, um, in the past, and we've talked about this issue before, our performing arts, um, so, uh, Mr. Rogers has taught outside of his area of expertise, he's taught a food section in the past, he has, um, picked up classes in, uh, PE before, so, uh, we do work to keep, um, the phrase we use is keep people whole, right? And make sure that they, um, have their preps, but, um, we utilize people in different areas when necessary, um.
Yeah, I was wondering how personal finance ended up under performing arts this year? Yeah, I was wondering how personal finance ended up under performing arts this year, but that was an explanation, I see. And then we're seeing the heavier band numbers at the seventh and eighth grade, going back to sort of what we used to, we used to be a pretty band-popular district, and then COVID kind of did a lot of damage at the elementary school level. And so, we're seeing the numbers picking up. Where kids are taking, fewer kids are taking general music and more are taking band. So, we may see those numbers change for Mr. Rogers. Anthropology, that's my only question. It's really light on requests.
Yeah, anthropology was light. We, and I didn't include the numbers because we did not run archaeology. So, our.
I see.
Hope is like we talk about sometimes, where like, you know, acting to second semester, looking to fill that section of anthropology with students who maybe had signed up for archaeology. And that happens through conversations with the school counselor. You know, we're not running archaeology this year. Would you consider anthropology? Does it work in your schedule? So, those are more individualized conversations that can happen afterwards. But, yeah, that was certainly one of the outliers.
Question about biology?
Yep.
It looks like there are significant fewer sections needed, but are there, for, for, if you look at all the different ones, are there staff members that can swing from biology to other science subjects?
Uh, yeah, we do have teachers who have an ability to pick up, oftentimes, physical sciences, maybe the, the common ground. But our teachers of physics, or chemistry, or biology, do teach the physical science, so they all have an understanding of the base knowledge that students will then.
I'm just, I want to make sure we're not going to have a situation where we've got biology teacher who is underutilized at a gap where we have.
Yeah, so, we definitely, and maybe more so than any other department, it gets complicated with your certifications in science. And when we're hiring, which we are in the process, did you already do?
Yeah, we did.
Alright, so, we, we've hired people in science this year, and we take into account not just areas of certification, but also teaching experience, and looking to support people, and potentially teaching outside of their area for a section when, when appropriate. So, biology, yep, so we went, it looks like from seven to five. If you look at this past year's section sizes, we averaged thirteen point one. We had one section that was as small as nine, and a section of ten. So, reducing down from seven to five, we felt like was well within.
And also, you drop one in accelerated biology, AP biology, picking up one. I just, it, it just looked like there might be a, a, a mismatch.
An anti-biology trend going on?
So, it looks like, yeah, so it looks like we actually added a section of AP Bio. We went from one to two, it looks like. And then you said.
And this could change by time of.
Sure.
I, I wasn't sure if it was, that you redirected staff, or you tried to redirect students.
So, when we know, when we know we have a potential vacancy coming, and we don't know what the candidate pool will look like, and what those strengths will look like, we also take into account, if we're not going to get the next John Boucher walking through the door to apply for our physics position, but we had someone who has an ability to maybe teach physics and learn how to teach maybe the higher end, you can mix and match those combinations of preps in different ways to give you the best chance at finding a candidate that will meet your needs.
Can I just speak one other piece? So, entering ninth graders might be recommended for accelerated biology based on their math and science. If they're taking Algebra One in middle, in eighth grade, with an A and an A in science, they'll be recommended for likely Excel Bio. If they don't meet those criteria, then their option is physical science with earth science. So, we increased two sections there. So, the drop in your Bio also correlates.
Does this capture that, is that assessment already occurred?
Yes, that was based on teacher recommendation. So, we increased physical science with fewer students being recommended for Excel Bio.
Excellent. Any other questions? So, again, this is a reminder, these are just requests. We'll see what the actual numbers are at the, at the end of October. Alright, thank you. Thanks so much for all of that. Now, we will go to the global. Thank you very much for your service to us this year. We really appreciate it. I assume this is your last meeting?
Unfortunately, it is.
Oh, we will miss you so much. And will there?
But you could always be a member of the public.
Yeah.
I will go and I will sit in those chairs.
So, would you like to give us an update on what's going on from Student Council?
Alright, well, as Mr. Grzon said, we had our big walk for change today. The weather was okay, but.
We weren't hot.
We, honestly, we were quite cold, to be fully honest.
The hydration stations are still full.
I actually started last and finished first, so, just want to say that. We turned it into a run for change because we were too cold. But anyways, last Saturday, we had our senior prom, which went amazing. Everyone loved it. We were, had some great feedback from both staff and students, specifically the chaperones. Again, graduation is unfortunately coming, but I honestly think that, I don't know, I guess, the senior class this year is just really good. And so, we're all excited but sad. We just finished up our AP testing. Well, actually not finished because of some. College board shut down? Nah, not our, not, it's not our fault. It was AP psych. I think, was it Friday?
Yeah, yeah, we have a date, and there's certain aspects of certain.
Made it national news.
Great.
Keep rolling with it, we're good.
You know, should have been done, but unfortunately, it's not. But, and Student Council, we, we did our CABLOCK presentation, and now we're wrapping up for the year.
Well, and you can extend our thanks again to Student Council for that presentation. I think we're going to have some follow-up from Mr. Grzon today on that, and we will be talking more and more about CABLOCK as the next couple of months go on, so.
Have speakers been identified for graduation?
They have, yeah. So, our student body president, and then our senior class president, Mr. Finn Brown. And our selection process, Kate Barrigan will be our.
Oh, and she's the one who presented here.
Yeah.
Along with, along with Finn.
Along with, was Finn?
No, Finn was not.
Was he?
Finn was here. He made a lot of, he helped us a lot with the presentation.
Okay.
But Finn was on the, I believe, the AP Gov DC trip. At the time of the presentation.
Right.
And Ms. Flaherty will be the, the staff.
Oh, nice. That's excellent. I look forward to it. Well, thank you very much, Maggie. Thanks for everything.
And elections are coming up too, right?
Oh, for Student Council.
I know, I know, it doesn't impact you, but we have Student Council elections coming up on the, you guys are gone. I think it's the day of your supercharge trip.
It's, it's during Senior Week, I do know. We are not in school, yeah.
Yes, Student Council elections are the fifth.
You get stuck about.
Can't vote.
I know. Thank you very much. And you know that you're welcome to stay. We do have a CABLOCK review and everything, but you are also welcome to go home and study.
Study. For what? Oh, for life. I mean, for all of my assignments that I will be turning in.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving forward, thank you, Maggie. We'll do the CABLOCK review, and we now have discussion part.
Would you like me to project? It's a PowerPoint that's in the.
I mean, the public would be, wouldn't be able to see if you don't project, so.
Sounds like I'm, I'm projecting, alright.
Sorry.
Project this gladly.
I'm passing it. It's my dinner now. I might need three.
We're getting strep lighted.
Oh, did you win your game?
Um, this one was refilled, so I drank probably about one and a half gallons. I drink a lot of water. And once you get used to it, if you don't drink it, you feel very dehydrated.
Just, we have another quick agenda adjustment. The board's going to need to go back into non-public at the end of the meeting. Just, don't worry.
Very quick.
Quick, non-public. It can be very quick, Tom. You control that. Never. Alright, okay. I'm just eating chocolate now. It's my dinner, I guess. I actually, I might. I'm a, I'm kind of a Hershey's girl, so. But, yeah, you're right. Yes, please. Do you need someone to push the button for you?
Uh, hey, the clicker. Now, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, with the April presentation from our Student Council with regards to their experience in CABLOCK and some of the recent changes, the board asked me to present a little bit of a historical perspective on the the thing they call CABLOCK. And so, I went back into my archives, and I found the original presentation that I put together in 2013 for Rick at the time, who presented to you. So, this just kind of outlines what the structure was when we first implemented CABLOCK way back when. So, it met similarly three times a week. It was forty-five minutes at that time. It's forty-four now. Every student in grades nine through eleven, as you may recall, was assigned to what we call the home-based CABLOCK. Seniors were never assigned a home-based CABLOCK. They were given a little bit more flexibility and autonomy, and they had the cafeteria to themselves if they, if they didn't actively sign up for, to go see a teacher, or if a teacher didn't actively sign them up, their default was the cafeteria. Grades nine through eleven reported to their home-based CABLOCK and either remained there for a study hall environment, or they would receive a pass to sign out to go meet with their teacher, or enrichment. And that was one of the things that, at the, in the initial phase of CABLOCK, did exist in a, in a few different areas. Each home-based CABLOCK section was staffed by one of our certified teachers, and if you recall, that exclusively took the role of the duties for our teaching staff. Prior to that, teachers had hall duty and lunch duty, and, and a large majority of them covered study hall duties. And all that entire, what I would term, kind of, employment pool, went away, and everybody's duty was a CABLOCK. So, that was replaced by, I think it was two part-time substitute positions that served in the mornings, and one of them is sitting directly across from me, who was regularly the, the CABLOCK study hall teacher, who served in the cafeteria for study halls throughout the day.
Is that, that was not contractual so much as it would have done because our assumption was we want to maximize the accessibility of staff.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. So, the, the language that existed then is the language that existed now with regards to duties. And within the possible assignments included study halls, and lunch duty, and hall duty, and, and all of the things that previously existed. Anecdotally, administratively, to get CABLOCK off the ground for what we had aimed it to do, and to meet the needs of students and teachers, it was important that students had access to all of their teachers. And without that, I, I don't think it would have been as successful as it was in implementation if it was one-offs here and there, didn't have it, didn't have CABLOCK assignment. So, yeah, the language in the contract existed as it does now, but the administrative decisions at the time were to, for CABLOCK to be successful, all teachers were in a CABLOCK. We threw everything at it, yeah. So, students are grouped by their guidance counselor. That was also a structure that existed, and we did have counselor push-ins with their one or two sections about once a month, and it, it did add an element of our advisory, which we have now, and didn't have at the time. Alright, so, fast forward, that, that structure ran for probably about six years, about five or six years. And it was, it also included some tier, what we, what we termed tier one, tier two, and tier three assignments. So, for students who were failing multiple classes at the time, two or more, our school counseling and administrative team, which at the time we called STAT, it now exists as SIT, Student Intervention Team, and the, the group would review those students who are failing more, two or more classes, and they would assign them to very small teacher-to-student ratio rooms, where they would help students prioritize their work. They would facilitate conversations with teachers, and oftentimes provide an environment conducive to success in their academic classes that they weren't experiencing without the support. So, that's what we called tier three. It was, I would say, hard to manage, required a lot of oversight, and moderately successful. We had what we called tier two, where students were assigned, mandatorily assigned by administration, to go see a teacher. If they were failing a class for an extended period of time, you were not allowed to go to the gym and go play basketball during CABLOCK. Administration took the, reserved the right to assign those students accordingly. So, fast forward to about 2019, and there was an appetite at the time to initiate a less clunky way for student signups. As you may have heard or may recall, the structure, the original structure of CABLOCK required paper pencil passes, teachers to take attendance, send kids with a pass to go see a teacher, cutting into the forty-five minutes. Sometimes significantly, you have a line of ten kids in your CABLOCK who need to go see another teacher, and by the time they end up sitting down to go take that test that they need to take, you know, you're, you're only down to thirty-five minutes. And so, it was challenging. It was even, if not more, challenging to identify the locations of students when you needed to. You know, mom or dad calls, I need to pick up Johnny, something's going on, and, and we would have a difficult time tracking that student down because there wasn't electronic coverage. We didn't, we, monitoring, we, the student was assigned to a certain CABLOCK, and then they would leave. And that was widespread, right? So, the large majority of the students in the school, we didn't have a finger on the pulse of where they were for forty-five minutes a day. So, that was certainly an issue and an acknowledged issue. And there was a, a component that, within Power School, that allowed students to sign themselves up, teachers to sign students up, so a two-way mechanism. And it was something called Adaptive Schedler, which was implemented in the year, school year 2019, 2020. Kind of a significant year, so, 2019, 2020. Oh, I'm sorry. So, 2019, 2020 comes around, and in its first year of rollout, Adaptive Schedler replaces home-based CABLOCK. And the, at the time, we were not yet one-to-one, if you recall. We had not gone through COVID yet. So, there were some tech access issues that created some challenges. But the initial rollout in 2019, 2020 allowed students to sign themselves up, and allowed teachers to sign them, sign students up electronically to minimize some of those issues that I just reviewed. And then in March, we remember when COVID hit.
We try not to remember.
We try not to remember. So, in March of 2020, that was kind of the end of the school year, in, in a lot of aspects, certainly the brick and mortar school year. So, students were no longer attending CABLOCK. So, in its first year, it obviously had some, some challenges in getting off the ground. The following year, 2020, 2021, you may recall, the schedule at the high school was significantly different than. the schedule at the high school, um, was significantly different than, uh, our, our current bell schedule and the, the bell schedule that, um, was prior. Uh, CABLOC was at the end of the day. And, uh, there, there were, um, um, allowances given to students, uh, who were not assigned or assigning themselves to CABLOC, uh, to have more, um, to have fewer people in the building and allow for all the things that we were most concerned about. Uh, so CABLOC, uh, in some aspects, did take a backseat that school year. Then its third year of, um, implementation, while it was the third year, uh, there was also, um, we were revering back to the, uh, our older schedule. Uh, I returned to the high school, replaced Rick, uh, new leadership. And while it was the third year, uh, in a lot of ways, it was kind of the first year. It was the first year of one-to-one, uh, full-on one-to-one. So we started to experience some of the growing pains that existed with Adaptive Schedler. More so that year maybe, um, because it was like a full implementation. So in review here, um, I'll just give you, um, a quick breakdown of the role of Adaptive Schedler. So, uh, certainly gives students the primary role in planning. And that's something that we do aim to do. We want to put the onus on the student, uh, the responsibility on the student to sign themselves up. If they identify they need to go see a teacher, we want them to identify that and make good decisions about how to go, how, how to do so. Uh, it also allows for last-minute, um, decision-making flexibility, uh, which is wha- what you want in, in CABLOC. A, a few years, uh, into CABLOC, we decided breaking that forty-five minute, uh, time period up into two, uh, and not just, um, being rigid about your assignments. Sure, yeah, if you can accomplish the work you need to in twenty minutes and seeing a teacher, why not break it down into two and allow you to go to see a second teacher if need be? So, uh, it provided that flexibility. Uh, students have two sections each CABLOC day, uh, where they can sign themselves up. You can stay in the same place if you want, or you can, uh, have two totally different spaces that you can go, uh, that you can sign yourselves up for and, and, and attend. Um, let's see, um, there is still the ability to sign students up, uh, mandatorily. So, uh, what we're, uh, we're calling tier two, so fostering student accountability. But then also beyond there, uh, the administrator or the teacher does reserve the right to assign students when appropriate, uh, to go see a teacher. And it does improve our tracking, right? It does allow us to, uh, better account for students', um, location. And, uh, we can, uh, in the click of a button, well, you go to, uh, you, you can find out pretty quickly where a student is, uh, based on their Adaptive Schedler signup. So it does improve, uh, several aspects of CABLOC. Some of the goals for the future of CABLOC. So, um, I talked a little bit about what we, um, what we identified as a tier-two assignment or a tier-three assignment, uh, in years past. Uh, we have our, our SIT team, our, our MTSS team, uh, that is heavily involved in this process and looking to more clearly define what tier-two means. And, uh, with a more emphasis on teacher requests, uh, carrying weight and having accountability for students. So, um, when a teacher says, "Hey, uh, I need to see you tomorrow, I'm gonna sign you up," um, having, uh, more accountability and, um, responsibility on the students to make those, um, good choices on their end, but also adhere to the requests of the teachers.
Does, does a teacher, um, input to that schedule of lock-in or can the student override it?
No, so when a teacher makes an assignment, the student cannot override it. So more clearly defined tier three, has specifically targeted skill groups, um, to proceed special education skill support. So I think one of the age-old challenges that we face with, um, what is MTSS is, um, if you have a student who's struggling academically at the high school, where we're a credit-bearing, um, system, uh, oftentimes the priority is supporting that student successfully completing the requirements for the course, overlooking at times supporting that student's skill-building. So when the rubber meets the road at the high school and you want a student to be successful, that often means passing classes. I think at the earlier, uh, grade levels, you're building skills and you're supporting students' future growth by building those skills. And when you get to high school, you can make the argument that there's two schools of thought that we're gonna continue to build those skills and we're gonna use CABLOC as that time, where you might have a student who's not successful in social studies class because they might have, uh, um, challenges in reading. Are you gonna spend time supporting that student's, maybe, um, gaps in, in reading skill during CABLOC? Or are you going to support that student's, um, maybe, uh, assignment completion or, um, assessment preparation and those types of things during CABLOC? So, uh, the, the SIT team evaluates.
Both tactical versus strategic, don't they?
Yeah, and I think when you have a third grader, I think this, this, you know, it's pretty clear, simple, and easy. If you've got a second semester senior, I'd say it's pretty clear and simple and easy what you're trying to help the student be successful with. You have a freshman, I think you have, um, some decisions to make about what the priorities are. So that's where, um, that's where those decisions lie in the, in the MTSS group or the, the SIT team. Um, and they review, um, they review data, uh, to evaluate the most effective approach for individual students. Alright, uh, as part of the April Student Council report, we had a, um, uh, a long, lengthy conversation about, uh, the most recent changes, which included, uh, individual teachers being assigned to study halls, uh, and not having the CABLOC duty. Uh, and actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip forward and come back to this slide because it's gonna make a little bit more sense. So, uh, this is current teacher, uh, study hall duty assignments. So we had talked a little bit about, uh, some of the criteria that were used to identify, uh, who would be covering study halls. Uh, at the outset, so your study hall assignments are not part of the scheduling process. So you run your schedule, you run your master schedule, you have your, uh, course requests, and you have all of, um, the, um, very, very complicated matrix of, of where the master schedule ends up landing. And then each individual teacher typically will have five classes that they teach and two classes that, uh, they don't. And on any given period, you, one through seven, you have X number of students, based on just how Power Schedules spit out the schedule, X number of students who don't have a class. Seniors first and seventh, they have senior options. So some of those numbers are a little smaller there. Um, and you have, um, grades nine through eleven assigned to study halls. And sometimes, just by the nature of the schedule, you might have a bubble in the middle of the schedule where, I think this year it's period three. We have a large number of students assigned to study hall, period three. That's one of the bigger, uh, that's the biggest, um, uh, out of any of the seven periods. So that's the first, um, review. How many people do you need to cover all of this, all of the studies? So you have seven periods. You might have fifty kids who are assigned to study. So you need at least two people assigned to that study hall, as an example. Who is available those periods is the next kind of layer of review. So if you might have, um, you know, if you, if you review period one and, uh, it happens to be, for whatever reason, social studies heavy, those, that's the only, that might be the only people that you can really pull from, or the only department that you could pull from. Uh, and there's a variety of different, uh, factors that then played into the decisions after that. So that we reviewed previous CABLOC signups. So in previous years, what your averages were for, um, we looked at like monthly data, uh, to, to kind of give a, uh, a glimpse or an idea of what your, your, your trends were. Um, and obviously, um, we needed, um, to support the students. So if we had a CABLOC that was often packed, that was not gonna be something that we were going to, uh, remove that teacher, um, just because it was something that we identified as a student need. If the numbers were lower, those are probably some of the first teachers that we looked at. Given all of the constraints that I already mentioned, um, that, that played in as well. We also looked at the singletons, and I know the AP Gov example was used, um, last, uh, at the student presentation. Uh, but we did look at the singletons. And we tried our best, um, to provide students with access to those singleton teachers, um, when possible.
Meaning that's the only teacher teaches that class?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, when there's just one section of it.
Dargen, that's all.
Yep, yep, sorry. Uh, so when there's only one section of it, uh, we tried our best to make sure that that teacher was available. But to do so across the board is impossible.
And I just wanna, I just wanna remind the board that the way it works is you're either, uh, you're either assigned to study hall or you're assigned a CABLOC duty or, or another duty, let's say. But study hall is only, according to the contract, it's a one semester assignment. So the teacher who's assigned to study hall has two marking periods of study hall and then they don't have, and then two marking periods of.
That's correct. So they would hypothetically have five classes they teach. For one semester, they would have one study hall and a prep. And then CABLOC would be available for them as a prep as well. And then the next semester, they would have their five classes, they would have two preps, and again, be available, um, CABLOC would serve as, uh, their, their, um.
They, they wouldn't be seeing students during.
They would be, yeah, that would be another prep for them as well. And that would be the length of the year.
In previous year, when you were not assigning, uh, teachers to study halls.
Yep.
If they did not have a section class, did they, I guess.
They had two preps.
Did it arise that they might only have four teaching sections in a semester? And so they always had five sections regardless of how it felt?
That's correct.
Alright, Jim, keep, I want you to keep going, sorry. I shouldn't have made.
Okay. So, uh, the, uh, the student presentation identified an imbalance in, uh, assignments based on what they grouped as, uh, I think they did STEM and Humanities, I think as two, um, separate groups. I broke it down a little bit further for you here. So you can see, these, these are individual teachers. So two Unified Arts teachers have a study, two Special Education teachers have a study, four Social Studies, five English.
Yeah.
This is the whole year. Yep. So two, four, eight, nine.
Seventeen. No?
Yep, seventeen. So.
That, that corresponds to six, seven, uh, I mean, uh, nine study halls?
Yep. And with seven periods, uh, there are some periods where we need two teachers to cover the number of students who have study hall. So I'm just gonna back here. Uh, this is a glimpse at the, these are student signups for CABLOC. And this was, eh, about a month. This was about a month of, uh, CABLOC assignments. Eh, excuse me, it's listed, um, with, uh, Science, uh, having the most number of signups. Uh, and you can just, uh, read that as your, at your leisure. I don't need to read through it. Um, but that's where, that's where the students go. Okay, um, I'm gonna fast forward a little bit to, because of the changes that we made in duty assignments, um, at the outset of this year, in the first year of, um, kind of the recent changes, uh, we asked individual departments to kind of restructure how they're going to provide, uh, students with supports, particularly when, you know, my teacher isn't available. So how are we gonna support that kid in getting the, the help that they need? So as an example, um, if you look at English, um, with prior organized, or organized by teacher, um, and they also did house students. They housed students for quiet study spaces. Um, if I'm not working with twenty-five kids on their essay, um, but I can host, you know, fifteen of them and I'm gonna work with my ten students over here, that was part of the structure that made CABLOC work. And that was, that was, um, an aspect to it. Uh, currently, we have what we at the outset called writing labs. We had grade-level writing labs, um, for all grades. And we had specific course support for the honors, the AP, and some senior electives. Um, with, uh, if you, um, look back at the other side, we have five English teachers, uh, who do not have CABLOC. So as you heard from the students, that could be significant depending on the student. So, um, at the outset, our goal was to have these labs, similar to like our math lab setup. Um, what we've learned and what we're hearing from students is that at the end of the day, um, the math lab structure, um, it doesn't necessarily work the same in some of our humanities. Kids wanna go see their teacher. They've been working on the assignment, the paper, and the book, they're reading the book, and they wanna, um, hear from the horse's mouth. And, um, it's understood, um, it's acknowledged, uh, despite, uh, the best intent. Uh, I think we maybe are missing some of what, uh, CABLOC used to provide, uh, with the new structure. I think that's kind of a, a fair way to describe it. So, uh, and you can read through, uh, all the different departments, uh, came up with solutions to the new structure. Um, and then from there, the students, um, utilize CABLOC accordingly. Um, and some things kind of just fell into place the way they, the way they may. So, um.
So if you look at.
Oh, yep.
So if you look at English and Social Studies.
Yep.
Those appear to be the two areas where was and is are considered most significantly different. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think.
World Language also.
Well, World Language is, there's only one teacher doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they lump, they lump World Language into Humanities, and I would draw a line between the two. We have one teacher assigned to study hall from World Language.
That's like one semester too.
And it's one semester, however, based on the.
That teacher's not available.
Contract Language, CABLOC is their prep. So they, by contract, are not available to students. And I think one of the things that, um, we'll see, so while we may have looked at, let's say, teacher, social studies teacher X, and they averaged, let's say, three point five students a day, those three point five students a day, um, may identify that meeting with that social studies teacher as an integral component to their success in the class.
And what are the, what, if any, do you view as the alternative opportunities for accessibility of a staff member to students?
So we talk about the fifteen minutes before and the fifteen minutes after. Um, I think that that is, um, that can, that can help, that can support. I don't think you're gonna, um, you're not gonna make up a test. You might finish a test. You might get a question answered that was, um, something that you absolutely needed to see your teacher face-to-face. The fifteen minutes before is probably more conducive. The fifteen minutes after, our buses, you know, bell rings at two-thirty, students are transported by the buses, they're out of there by two-thirty-five. Um, so the after.
Transportation, a big, a big limitation on.
The fifteen minutes after. For the fifteen minutes after, it would be for.
For the fifteen minutes after, yeah. Fifteen minutes before, our buses roll in at seven eighteen, and the first bell rings at seven forty, our teachers are available at seven twenty-five. So, yeah, there's a legitimate fifteen, solid fifteen minutes before school where you needed to go see a teacher, finish something up fairly quickly, um, you took the bus, that could happen.
But there is an opportunity, I mean, in terms of making up tests, the kids can go to a, I understand why, uh, why our young people would say, "I'm working on an essay, I wanna see my teacher."
Yep.
But I'm making up a test.
Yeah, we have the structures in place where.
The structures in place that you can go and make up your test, you don't have to have the teacher, right?
And I have a study hall.
And it's just, I need my test, as long as you have it.
Go see Mr. Babcock and you can take your test.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
PLC days are also.
Yep, and we have PLC Fridays where we do, uh, have a, a room where, um, student, teachers can provide, um, assessments, uh, and it's a supervised space, and they can take that test or assessment, um, in a supervised setting, just the same. Yep. Okay, um, so, um, HBHS current status, CABLOC advisory, and study halls. Uh, so this just kind of summarizes. Uh, so if we look back at the original structure, it had different components of, uh, what we currently do. I think, uh, we do a lot of this really well. I think we do a lot of this really well, but certainly always room for improvement. So students are more in control, they're scheduling themselves with the use of Adaptive Schedular. Adaptive Schedular certainly improved our ability to locate students during this flexibly scheduled time. Adaptive Schedular has improved our ability to track students' time with specific instructional course support. So when the sit team is reviewing, what's this kid have been doing for the last month in Cav Block? We have that data accessible. There's definitely been a decline in the enrichment opportunities and that's not a function of assigning teachers to study halls. That's just a, that's just how Cav Block has kind of evolved. The newness of it in 2013, you know, there were opportunities in family consumer science and maybe art classes. And then it kind of got back to, well, I'm just gonna go see my teacher. And if I needed to see my fa- my family consumer science teacher, it was about the class. It wasn't about learning this new thing in an enrichment environment. So enrichment opportunities still exist with PE department, Performing Arts Department for sure. But again, that's often still related to maybe a, an outside of school extracurricular, a concert's coming up and I'm gonna prepare for that, or guitar night, or those types of enrichment opportunities.
Is it fair to say decline is student driven as opposed to?
Yeah, yeah, I would. I don't, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that staff wasn't willing and able to do it. It's just by the nature of how things fell, yeah. Advisory program has replaced the goal of home-based Cav Block structure. As you know, that is established in year one. Students seeking support from respective classroom teachers who are assigned to study hall duty may or may not have access. And we discussed that at length.
That's the issue right there.
Learning lab setup is not conducive to all disciplines. And despite intended learning lab goals and structure, students prefer meeting with their respective classroom teachers. That's what we've kind of taken away from.
That's what the rubber hits the road. That's what it is. Like, at the end of the day, you did everything you could. This is the first time that you went through the process of looking for who would be best suited to be study hall teachers and who would be. And so the feedback is that, like, obviously, there's some, you know, just gotta figure it out a little bit more. Unfortunately, he won't be with us and we'll have a new principal. So it, it sounds like it's a really complicated thing to figure out.
Yeah, beyond the volume of students a teacher may see, you know, obviously, we understand there to be value in, you know, a, a smaller num- smaller sampling of student interactions. And we heard it from kids last month.
Yeah.
That last item, do you think that is a cultural thing or an actual functional performance?
I don't know if I can answer that, Tom. I think, you know, so our freshmen who knew, who know no different than their experience this past year. If you fast forward three years and those guys are seniors and you maintained this structure, I think that would be a better time to answer that question.
I'm just sort of thinking in terms of what kids go to Cav Block for. Their preference may be to go to a teacher. But do you, as someone of an outsider watching, believe that the capability for them to get what they need, this lesson, when they have to get it from someone who is not their teacher versus it being, this isn't how I need to hear it.
Yeah, I think it's a preference. I don't know if it's a necessity.
One of, one of the other things that we're talking about was on the last Venn diagram, trying to get greater consistency and commonality in class to class.
Yep.
Of a, of a, section to section of a different thing.
And in my experience, I, I think we, we do a pretty good job of that compared to other schools. I think, I think the PLC model is something we can hang our hats on because I do think this is a common experience across the same courses for students.
So in theory, if you're, if you're getting taught by Mrs. Jones in Course A and you need to go see Mrs. Smith in, in Course A, because the, we've, we've tied the curriculum, we have PLC, we have conversation. So even if this is an English course or a Social Studies course where things are a little more esoteric, the, the skills and the curriculum and everything should be the same. So you should be able to get what you need from that person, but you might not have that same personal connection or feeling that like the grading and the assessment's gonna come out the same because teacher A likes things more flowery and teacher B.
I think we've done it successfully in math for years. I think that's been the structure in math for years.
This is the biggest change.
So I think, again, I go back, I, I would say, and we, we heard it from our students who had experienced Cav Block and its previous structure for three years.
Right.
And this is new for them. I think that conversation might be different in a few years with our current freshmen because that's their only experience. So they might, they don't have the same perspective.
I also think there's an opportunity perhaps for us to find a way to breed greater familiarity among student population and staff so that they're not going to a stranger.
Right. So I just want the public, like, these are really specific and, and we're really digging down. And a lot of this is building management. It's not the board. It's not. But we wanted, wanted to hear back because we've instituted advisory. I believe it butts up against Cav Block now.
It does now, yep.
So now we've got fifteen minutes of advisory, we've got forty-five minutes of Cav Block. We're responsible for negotiating contracts. We need to have an understanding of how these times are being used, both from the students and the staff. So this is really helpful to have this kind of level of detail on what it's doing in terms of how it's being staffed, how our kids are using it. I still don't know if we have the answer of whether or not it actually, how effective it is for our kids in terms of their learning. But it seems like it meets a lot of their needs in terms of getting extra help. Tom asked a good question I read in the minutes last week about, is there some level of just like an extension of the classroom going on in Cav Block instead of just a resource to support the classroom? Is it, we're moving quickly through subjects and so, through a topic? And then we're saying, oh, just come to Cav Block instead of, you know.
Are teachers relying on it as a.
Right. So those are still some questions, but that's not what the, what we wanted from you tonight, was the follow-up on what the kids. So the staffing and the contract that's been, and the way you're approaching it has been what this is all about. So I just wanted everyone to come.
Before you run away with your pants on fire, have you made any suggestions as to a change in strategy for next year? For any.
Speaking openly, the recommendation to have teachers cover study halls was not initiated.
Or how decisions are made or, or changing the name. This was, this was the first time in a while you've, you've had to, number one, identify teachers to use and have used them. I'm sure there have been positive and negative outcomes to it. We're sort of seeing some of the negative focus on the Cav Block. Are the, are the study halls working better? Are, are.
I think the structure.
Functionality in there? And how would you tweak it if you weren't, if you're gonna be here another year, how would you tweak it?
I can certainly say I don't have the perfect solution given the constraints Cav Block or study for teacher assignments. I think no matter who covers studies, you're gonna be pulling something away from Cav Block that otherwise would exist for student access. I think teachers covering study halls is a good thing for a, running a building. I, I think removing that entire employee group from those assignments in 2013 changed the building. It added challenges to administration. It improved student, or teacher access to students tremendously. It gave us a, an ability for our, our teachers and students to develop more individualized relationships. And I think students perform better. I think no matter where you pull from, who you pull, whatever department you choose to pull from, you're gonna remove access to a student's teacher. Yeah.
But how, how about the study halls? Is there tangible benefit in having that in there that you've seen?
He just said it was good.
He said it was good, but I don't, but then he immediately said, but I don't know, what, what was good about it?
So I think, first off, you remove the magnet, the social magnet of a group study hall in the cafeteria in the middle of the building.
So you don't have kids coming from other classes to pop into the Cav Block, to, to pop into the cafeteria, even though they're supposed to be in math? They're gonna wander into, they're gonna wander into that study hall that's being manned by a substitute teacher.
Who doesn't know faces.
Not sure if that face is Jim or Bill or whatever, yeah.
Or if they're in the study hall or if they're supposed to be there. It, it was.
I'm just gonna speak plain.
Yeah, it's a challenging situation. It's a very challenging situation, which at the time, in 2013, that was the solution to get Cav Block up and running. And I think, and I think the teachers with students, periods one through seven, in a classroom environment, in an academic setting, covering study halls with manageable numbers is a much better way of doing business.
Are the kids who are going to study hall because they want to have a study hall, are they getting what they need better? Is it, cause we, when, when we were talking about it, there was a couple elements. One was having, having a more disciplined environment by having people who understood manage, classroom management. Number two was to have an environment where they could not, maybe not quite like Cav Block, but they had a staff member that they could approach for help with whatever it was that they were doing in their study hall. Did that materialize, you think?
I won't say that doesn't exist. I don't know if that's the highlight or the benefit to the structure that study hall in a classroom provides. I think if you took, if you took an average high school student, sophomore, who put them in a group study in the cafeteria with a peer group and the social distractions that exist without any kind of academic expectation for how they're gonna spend that time versus that same average student who's in an academic setting in a classroom with a certified teacher who runs a tight ship and says, no, these are the expectations for the class today or for, for the semester in my room. And if you need to use the, the library, you can access that space. There's X number of seats available every day. But while you're here, you're gonna be either silent and working or silent. I think it's a different environment and I think when Cav Block went in, that was lost.
So if you were here next year, you would continue to put teachers in study halls?
Yeah, probably with a less than, a very imperfect way about going about doing it.
You might, might try a little different approach.
We would, yeah, we would certainly try to improve it, but it would be imperfect.
Well, I mean, it's a first year, so you're gonna see improvement. Are there any other questions?
I think that the student behavior is different with the teacher that they know that's in the building and with the staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, so that makes a big difference too.
Absolutely. Any other questions? I appreciate it. This is great feedback. It really is. We've been waiting and digging in to Cav Block. And it works and it's advisory fifteen minutes and then they go to Cav Block.
I like it, yeah.
Yeah, that works well.
Yep.
Okay, great. Good to know. Thank you so much.
Would you like to get some sort of, uh, feedback on, on.
Advisory?
Yeah, advisory.
That's, that's in June.
Okay.
Right, Tim? We're scheduled for June to do that?
I can provide a presentation for you, but I won't be here on June nineteenth.
Okay. But someone will present? We will read it aloud? Okay, thank you.
How about Lynn?
Maybe, maybe someone from the advisory committee?
Yeah, there's people there who.
Yeah, it'd be great. Or people on the, um, isn't there a team that does the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be.
Yeah.
Advisory Leadership Team.
Somebody, maybe. That would be great to have somebody come and just do a quick presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thanks for all of this. Thanks for all your hard work on this. And it sounds like you were heavily involved in the beginning and here you are, ten years later, or twelve, it sounds like.
As the dead would say, my longest days.
Okay. Alrighty, so moving on to CTE agreement. And I am gonna tell the, I think the principals are okay to go, or do we need them for policy?
We don't need them for policy.
Um, what about stipends?
Nope.
Okay. So the principals are free to go. Okay, CTE. I do sorry, Patrick, but you know what? That was really good for you to listen to all that Cav Block stuff. Okay, go ahead, the CTE piece. So this was brought to you last month. Wait a second, Tim, you're not gonna be here in June?
Okay, nice try.
Oh my gosh. So I had a goodbye, I have a goodbye, but it's not ready. It's May. So I'm gonna present it to you and Andy, who I don't think will be here in June, and you guys are just gonna have to watch it, okay?
You'll just have to go back and watch the video.
You're just gonna have to watch the video because, you know, whatever.
Thank you all. Yeah, so I will be attending, my daughter chose Disney as her graduation present.
Yeah, that's okay.
Going to Disney on the V A T.
That's okay. It's really fine. But I, I do want, so then I do wanna take a moment to thank you for all of your hard work for this district and for the many, many years of not just principal, but all the years that you've spent being HB and being blue and white. We really appreciate all that. Yeah, it's been our pleasure to have you. So I, I do have an idea for something, a little something, to present to you in June, but I'll just bring it by.
Thank you all. I still have like six weeks.
I know, that's why I wasn't gonna say goodbye until June, but okay, fine.
When's graduation for your daughter? It's not the St. Anne's.
The twelfth, yeah. They're, they're at St. Anne's on the twelfth.
Yeah, I knew they went to the bigger venues. I was hoping it wasn't gonna conflict.
No.
I'm, I'm not saying goodbye to you, Patrick, cause you're coming back. You'll be here in June?
I'll be here.
Okay, all good.
Good night.
Good night, Patrick. I would have been more eloquently prepared for a goodbye, Tim, had I known, so.
All right, so.
CTE, sorry, let's move on.
Yeah, so we discussed this last month. It's a regional agreement with Nashua. We send students to Nashua North, Nashua South. This is an agreement until 2028. And so we talked about it last month and we kept it on for a month. And the hope is that we will allow Holly to sign that. Just a deliberative item.
Be great. So that's deliberative. Maybe we'll talk a little bit more about it if we have any questions there. Revenue expense report, okay. Linda, we gotta start moving this up till like before the, we might need to move her before the principals report. Maybe in the new, in the new, maybe the new superintendent might like to like rearrange that and make the revenue expense report before.
Or she might wanna present and leave me at home. You never know.
Where's the fun in that?
We are, we're on the home stretch in the finance department. So we've got, we're continuing to see savings across the board in expenses. Two notable differences from last month's report is, one, we have an additional seventy thousand dollar surplus in support services as we're experiencing savings in changing student needs and placements. Includes savings in such areas as speech services, occupational therapy, and vision and hearing consultations. And then the other difference is we've gotten another fifty thousand dollars in grant money to offset expenses. This came from our IDEA grant, standing for Individuals with Disabilities Act, bringing our total IDEA revenue for the year to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're also projecting more revenue than we reported last month in food service. Right now, we're projecting to exceed our revenue food service sales budget by almost two hundred thousand dollars. And I did wanna share with you some of our director of nutrition's comments when I asked her, why did she think this was happening? So let me read her email from today. This year, we are offering more meal choices. We have a second and sometimes even a third choice each day in addition to many choices we already had, main meal sandwiches, salad, yogurt, parfait. Students love choices. We are able to do that because staffing is better with an influx of substitutes. We have a fantastic pool of subs. And we've also been doing more from scratch, fish tacos, ham broccoli pasta Alfredo, buffalo chicken bake, et cetera. The students really seem to love these meals. And then finally, we brought back New Hampshire Harvest of the Month and introduced Cultural Day. Each month, we celebrate a different country and a menu that's reflective of that country. For example, in April, we celebrated Indian cuisine and May was Mexico.
So more kids are buying.
Share with you some of our food service success.
That's great. Thank you.
So our projected fund balance at the end of the year now stands at six hundred and three thousand, four hundred and five dollars. And the business administrator has included a memo in the packet outlining her proposal. And are you covering that memo or?
I'm happy to, but you can. I'm happy to, but you can if you're ready for it.
Um, do you want me to just read it, or I wasn't, I wasn't sure who was talking on this?
I, I can speak to it. Um, so, we knew that there were going to be price hikes on our interactive flat panels and our student Chromebook devices, so we received permission from our auditors to pre-buy those items with next year's money, but buy them now as long as they remain sealed. So we went ahead and did that, um, at a huge savings, uh, but now that we have them, we, we could pay for them with this year's money, freeing up next year's money. Um, in addition to this, um, we did, we did tell the taxpayers we would return two hundred thousand, but as you can see, we're at six oh three right now. So one of the proposals would be to, to complete some ADA renovations in the tune of fifty-two thousand. Those are required for student needs for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, another required item was the replacement of middle school lab tables. Um, it was in the budget, uh, and then the, the dollar amount was cut, hoping that potentially we'd have some money left over in FY twenty-five, and here we do. Um, and then finally, and this is, you know, been discussed at facilities committee meeting, the advancement of the roof section. So we have the middle school roof section one in the budget, we are looking to potentially move that forward to section two, for, in the tune of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, in the hopes of allowing the middle school roof to be ready to go for all of the HVAC and solar, roof-mounted solar that, that was approved in March. So, that is, those are items that, um, our business administrator has recommended that we pre-purchase, and, um, you know, we would be looking for, um, to either, to deliberate on that now, or we could potentially push the deliberation until, until June, I see it's on there.
It's on there.
But, yeah.
Is it itemized in any, any place on any of those things that are in our packet?
It's, I mean, in the memo it is.
In the memo.
And all of those were budgeted for, for the upcoming year?
Correct.
All the renovations?
Um, sorry, no, the roof section was not, we did roof section one, we're looking to add roof section two, given that, um, we don't want the roof to hold up the progress of, of the, the project. But the lab tables, the ADA re, renovations, and, um, the interactive flat panels and Chromebooks, those are all FY twenty-six budgeted items.
Linda, did you finish your expense report?
I did, I just wanted to, um, make sure the board understands that if we create purchase orders right now for the, those three items in the memo, and then, let's say, in a month from now, the report doesn't look as good, and we don't have as much money, we have the, what's important is that we're encumbering it, so that we protect the funds. So, I think she really wants a decision tonight, so that we can do that.
Right.
It doesn't mean we have to spend them.
Okay.
So if, if the numbers change, it just means there are purchase orders, but we don't have to do anything until we know where we end up.
All right. Um, the roof section was in the minutes from last month, so if anybody's uncomfortable with that potential, like, that it wasn't, we did talk about it, Andy gave us a heads up last month, that he thought there would be funds, um, available, and that we might wanna consider the roof, that was in the minutes. Um, so this would be the second month of that topic. The two items that, um, the other two items, the, well, the flat panels, obviously, and those items that are in the current, the budget for next year, um, we're just moving that, and paying for those sooner, so the public's already approved us buying those things when they prove the budget.
That's the ADA stuff?
That's the ADA thing and the eleven thousand dollars. Am I saying, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The lab tables are ADA, right?
No.
No, there's two separate items.
Two separate items, so, but that will be under deliberation, so thank you so much, Linda. Is there any other questions for Linda or for Gina on those two, number three and number four, revenue expense report and the year-end purchase recommendations?
Do you have the map, do you have the map of what, if those, those three things were done, where would that, where would that do your projection?
I have to look up, so, I have the, I have the total of one, two, and three, what I don't have is that.
Six oh three, four oh five, so what's your?
The flat panels?
Correct.
So, if you take the six oh three, four oh five, and subtract out the, um, the expenses we've already, the FY twenty-six expenses that we've prepaid.
Yeah.
That's two hundred and thirty-four thousand, and then there's a hundred and nine thousand in addition to that, that are also part of the prepaid, so the.
One oh nine?
So the total prepaid is three hundred and forty-four thousand, so if you take the six oh three minus the three forty-four, that leaves us a balance, right now with these numbers, of two fifty-nine.
And we promised the taxpayers we would return back two hundred.
Two hundred, exactly.
We would try to, if we, if we run it back, if we.
And the flat panels are on top of that?
No.
No, that's included.
Okay.
The three hundred and forty-four thousand is including all of those prepaid expenses where she talks about, the flat panels and the computer devices. That's the total of all of that.
You're saying two hundred and forty-four? What did you say? Cause it's two fifty-seven ninety, so.
The two fifty-seven is the balance, so, six oh three thousand.
Yeah.
Minus the three hundred and forty-four thousand, which is not in the memo, but that's the total, gets us to the two fifty-seven.
Okay.
Came up in two sixty-four oh five.
Uh, right, so did I, so, um, at the end of the day, if we're saying that we have a balance of six oh three, four oh five, and we're going to return, we are committed to returning two hundred, we can approve these with a per, with a sum not to exceed four hundred thousand, with the purchase of the flat panels, the Chromebooks, the ADA renovations, the lab tables, the roof section number two, and then we'll get the exact figures in June, because that would encompass everything, and we're still guaranteeing that we're returning the two hundred thousand.
Need to go four hundred to cover it?
I think I can go less, but I don't want to just make a guesstimate, because I think all of our numbers are slightly off, so.
My only concern is, if we go four hundred, and it comes in as it's currently showing at, at more like three forty, are we gonna try and?
No.
Jam another fifty?
No, the, and we can identify specifically the five items that have been identified, um.
So, these items up to a maximum?
Correct, and then I, I can give you that number in June.
The one that, the one that most concerned me is the roof, cause I don't know what materials and stuff are coming in, what, you know, we, we talked.
So that was an updated quote, based on the quote we got for the roof section that was approved, so that is actually a firm quote.
For how long, do you know?
For work this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one's actually pretty firm.
All right, so, um, we will have that on, that's deliberative item, we'll include the language that's not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, and then we can vote on that in a few. Um, thank you very much, Linda.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to the stipend committee.
Okay.
I know that we don't have. Do we have to vote on this, or this is just for us to review, right?
Yeah, so basically, more information's gonna come, um, forward in the next month, uh, but there's a quick meeting on May fourteenth to discuss next steps, um, so the survey of all of the club advisors and coaches is being sent out, or was sent out, and they're gonna gather the data for a meeting to take place prior to the June twenty twenty-six school board meeting, with any recommendations for FY twenty-seven that we could put in the budget, so.
And we already moved to this percentage system?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't really need to do anything with that. It's just part of the policy, or part of the stipend, you know, we've just agreed to make sure we review the stipends regularly, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Moving, any questions on that?
Well, are we gonna actually review them?
Well, I think it sounds like they're gonna come back in June, so they've been brought to us in May, and then it sounds like if you look at the note that was sent to us, um, the stipend committee is going to come back with changes, so right now.
So the, the one that's in there is just what?
This is the pers, it's the percentages of where they are now, if you read the note, and then, and, go ahead, Gina.
The survey is looking at requesting amount of hours and different, um, data points that we can decide whether, which, whether they're at the right tier, with different positions, and if, that, those numbers. Because we want, Brian sent out the, um, percentages where we are right now, because we had, we were asked before what the actual dollar amounts were, so he put that together and sent it out, but we are trying to get more data so that we have something for the budget for, in the fall, so he had, he sent a survey out, and we, the survey is actually to do, be due, due back, and we were having another meeting to discuss the survey results before the June meeting here, so that if we have any other changes or thoughts or recommendations.
Right, so you could decide that you wanna move, like, Homefront Heroes to a, to the tier where it's a one and a half percent instead of a one percent, or you could, based on the survey and based on that, but right now, everybody's in the same place that they were in the beginning of this year, because you guys are just getting started on that process, this is an update.
Cause we're looking at twenty-seven, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So we are using the percentage-based type of.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Supposed to be proposal by the building administrator, right?
What was that?
The, the proposals are supposed to come to us from the building administrators, I think?
Uh, yeah, so, Bri.
I was wondering what's happening, who's representing the high school?
Oh, Brian, he's leading the committee.
Yeah, and Tim, Tim's been in the meetings with us to this point, yeah.
Is the, is the principal-elect, um, gonna get plugged into any of these, you think, or not really?
Yes, he spent the day with us today. Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions on that? Kidoki, moving on to the facilities update, thank you for including the minutes and the agenda in this. Linda, you are welcome to scoot whenever you want to.
Thank you.
So, um, we discussed and, and looked at the details around the boiler, uh, designs and things like that, and, and really, the entire project is gonna be broken up into three phases over the course of three years. So, phase one is the boilers, of course, lots of detail and, and he, heavy, deep design on how that will be installed and so forth. We did talk about how we wanna accelerate, um, maybe the, the roof, as we talked about, and we'll get into too much detail there, but, uh, the sense of the committee was that we wanted to accelerate it to see if we can start procuring, um, materials such as the solar panels and things like that, cause there's a whole lot of moving parts around tariffs and things like that, and.
Really?
And, and we only have so much money to use, right, so, and, and that we can have, so there's a big uptick in, uh, those things. We did talk a little bit about, well, if that were to happen, then what? And, and we kinda used the, the Hollis School, uh, Energy Program as a bit of an example, because it, that's indeed what happened, you know, that we got so far into the project, and then material costs changed dramatically, so we're, we didn't, we didn't not do it. We, we just did what we could do, and then said, well, you know, this is for some later time, you know?
Yeah.
And, and so that's how I think we'll proceed with this, uh, this project, but, um, we, we will see, but the, I think the big issue is, is that we have to go through, uh, several rounds of, of project, uh, design approvals with Eversource, and that may tweak and modify the design a little bit, which may change the procurement amount of material. So, really, we can't, the, the, the absolute thing that we need to have is the final approval, which probably won't happen until October, November of this year. So, we, we kind of, you know, provided our, our, our desires to E E I and, and so forth, they, I, I felt that they, they pretty much understood and what our priorities are, uh, and how we wanna move forward, but if I missed anything else, Gina, by all means, fill in the blanks.
No, I think you, um, made a lot of sense, I mean, the first priority, obviously, is getting the, the tank out of the underground, um, and then redoing the boiler plant. Then, you know, LED lights, you wanna do them when you're removing the ceiling anyway, and redoing all the HVAC systems, so, trying to balance, looking at rebates and, um, manpower, and, you know, not opening ceilings twice.
So how often do you think the facilities committee's gonna meet on this? Is this gonna be a?
I think it's gonna continue monthly, yeah.
Is it gonna be a monthly meeting?
Yeah, so far.
And the facilities committee's gonna be involved in a lot of that, like, conversation and decision-making, and, yeah.
So Lance and I will be the point people, um, but we will have regular meetings with the committee.
I think there'll probably be a, a time where, once things are happening and in motion, we may not need to meet monthly, but we'll, we'll look into that as we get into this and make recommendations.
Start with the latter thing first, then go back. I think that when, as Rob said, once they actually start doing some of the work, and we're underway, it will leave the committee available to potentially look at other facilities questions that may arise, particularly if we're starting to talk about space considerations and de-ability, at which time it may also be worthwhile to supplement or alter the membership of the committee.
Okay.
Going back to what Rob touched on about the rebates, a question that I had, that I, I think that this group needs to weigh in on, is if we find that because of legislation, or executive order, or anything of that nature, the rebate on the solar disappears, I, and you, remember, the rebate was twenty-five point six percent, I think, so over a quarter of the funds were expected to be covered by the rebates. Is this group comfortable spending all the money that was authorized, but only getting seventy-five percent of what was promised?
It's a hypo, it's a hypothetical, can we, can we?
Well, we're not, we're not there yet, but I, I think, we, what we're trying to do, what we've asked is to see whether or not we can get Eversource commitment, uh, approval in time to allow the, um, high school, which is not roof-dependent, to get the high school installation done this calendar year. And, uh, it's conceivable that within the next few months, we may be confronted with a question regarding the actual cost versus the projected cost.
Yeah, I think that's.
So I don't want it to be a surprise to this group.
I don't think any of us will be surprised, meaning, right.
No, I don't, the, the question is asked.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, it's a good question, I don't think we.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it's definitely on the minds of the committee.
Yeah.
We're keeping a close eye on that.
That's great.
And, and we wanna understand it both from a preference, and, I just wanna make sure that there's no, um, procedural problem either way. If we're allowed, if we have the discretion as a board to make that decision, I wanna make sure that that's true.
I, I can't answer that.
No, I can't.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, I think it's great that that's, that's on the table, I don't know if we're gonna discuss that tonight, but it's certain that we can, we can, um, like, it's a hypothetical, so I think we can, we're all, we'll all think about it, how's that sound? Is that good? Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Any other questions for the facilities committee? Okay, thank you very much for the update. I'm gonna move into, um, some deliberations. Uh, the first is the new deliberative item, um, that, you know, we adjusted the agenda, and that's to authorize this, I need a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire, accept reservations, and terminate staff until the August board meeting, and require notification to the board of such actions.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, and I need a second.
Second.
Second by Rob.
Do you have a reminder why you wanna be a dismember than the next?
In case we find another.
So you wanna be able to do that short, no, this is the next.
Correct, yeah, for some key positions, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that? All those in favor? Seven zero, six zero, motion carries.
Ask a procedural question, like.
Mm-hmm.
Is our outgoing superintendent?
I have that same.
Likely to be involved in, in that process, because if he made it sound as if he is going to be, um, out of, out of the district for a significant portion of the month of June?
Correct, so, no.
So, would you, who, who did the motion authorize?
I actually did, as I was reading it, the superintendent, so shall I do?
Think we need to amend it.
Amend it to super, so, can we go back?
For superintendent-elect.
Okay, so we, can we?
I made a motion to.
Amend.
To amend the previous motion to include the superintendent-elect as an authorized party.
And, I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kate, all in favor? Second, Kate. All in favor?
Good call.
Six, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I need a motion by a member to approve the recommendation of the superintendent-elect regarding compensation as discussed during the non-public session. Um, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Second by Rob. I'd like to just kind of do it, all those in favor? All those in favor, six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, I need a motion to approve entering into the Regional Career and Technical Education Agreement, RCTEA, between the Nashville School District, SAU forty-two, receiving district, Hollis Brookline School District, SAU forty-one, sending district, Sauhegan School District, sending district, and Narimex School District, sending district, effective from the last date signature through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Need a motion?
So moved.
By Kate.
Second.
Second, Rob. Are there any comments? Yes, Tom?
I'm sorry, I.
I've had a lot of comments tonight, too, so I'm going to.
I hadn't seen it before, so I was reading it, like, um, section four, the seat of appointment, what's it? Talks about students, um, who are not part of the agreement, how they get treated, but it doesn't say. I thought there was something that said there, that there's a formula or a contractual method for, for districts that are in the agreement, how the apportionment impacts them. Is it in here or am I missing it, or could you, do you know if it's covered? Because I, I thought that that was one of the, the driving forces behind wanting to get into it was getting, was getting that.
Guaranteed seats, yeah. So, this meeting I had with them was in February.
What is?
Uh, is it in, uh, section three?
Yeah, I think that's, as I'm going back, I think it's.
What is your understanding of?
So, the conversation was, I mean, it was a formula. We looked at all the different sections, all of the students that expressed an interest. And, um, and it was a percentage of all of them, and that was divided equally between the, the districts that were present there that are.
So, it's not proportional to our population, is it?
It, it is not. It is equal between the, um, sending districts. And then, if we had, you know, ten students that wanted automotive, but we only had eight slots, but let's say, um, uh, Sauhegan didn't use theirs, we would have access to those.
Do we get preference to vacancies before it goes out to the job?
Correct, yes. Bless you. They're looking, that percentage is looking to go to the sending districts first, first equally, and then fill them up. Okay.
Second question I have is, uh, I, I don't understand what it says about how the tuition is actually calculated. Can they just set it arbitrarily?
Um, no, it's based on a formula from their per pupil and amount of funding from Perkins.
But their per pupil, isn't that self-generated? Can't they pick any number like we do?
For what? Our tuition is our per pupil.
Do they use the state number for?
Yeah, from the MS twenty-five.
Okay, I thought someone said that it's the state, it's the number that they have to their contract.
No.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Six, zero.
Thank you.
Russia carries.
So, you want it?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, so now we, yes, you two, one. Okay, so I also need to appoint someone to serve as the board's representative on the regional advisory committee. Anyone interested in that?
I thought it was supposed to be the superintendent for.
And a board member.
A board member.
How often do they meet?
Um, so far, once, ever.
Does anybody else want to do it?
No.
Are you sure?
Oh, I'm sure. I don't want to do it. Anyone else?
I just thought there were other people.
No, I don't know. Is there, I don't want to do it. I just know that. When do they meet at night?
They will hold at least one joint meeting annually.
Do you want to do it, Tom?
That's what it says.
I'm interested, yeah.
Is there anyone else interested?
If you're interested, it's all yours, in my eyes.
I can't stand in the way of that type of level. It wouldn't be right.
You're right.
We wouldn't do that.
Okay, so Tom Solon, so I need a motion to approve the appointment of Tom Solon as the board's representative for the Regional Advisory Committee for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six term.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. Second?
Second.
By Rob.
Because we've done it for other ones tonight.
Um, and all those in, I, I, okay, okay. All those in favor? Six, zero. Great. Um, okay, so I need a motion to approve the year-end purchase recommendations of the business office, as outlined in the memorandum, provided with the agenda packet, as long as, um, the, what do I mean, expenditure? Does not exceed four hundred thousand dollars. The funding source is the available balance remaining at year-end after the return of two hundred thousand dollars to the tax base, which actually covers us. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Cindy and Rob. Are there any questions? We've already covered this.
Can you just actually read what the motion is going to say?
I just read it.
I know, but it was.
To approve the year-end purchase recommendations of the business administrator outlined in the memorandum and provided with, within the agenda packet, but not to exceed an expenditure of over four hundred thousand dollars. Is that the right word?
Well, was the two hundred in there?
Wait, funding source is the available fund balance remaining at year-end after the return of two hundred thousand dollars to the tax base.
I wasn't sure if that was in the motion.
Yes, it was all part of the motion. Sorry, okay. All those in favor? Okay, six, zero. All right, so then the last thing is, um, the policy memo. So, I'm going to try to do the whole policy memo at once today, because we have one, um, third read and all of the others are first reads. So, I'm going to do, we're going to do the motion to approve the recommendation. We'll put it on the table. Then we'll talk about the policy memo and ask questions about any of the policies. Um, but they are all first reads, so if there's any, okay, let's just put the motion on, then I'll talk about that. So, I need a motion to approve the recommendation identified in the policy memo as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, second by Rob. So, the process we're going to follow here is that we have the policy memo in front of us, questions, comments, whatever, on any policy that's not going to be finalized, we'll just go back to the policy committee. Um, and then the, um, the third read, we didn't have any changes from the first time, from the second read, right?
No, we did. So, I just noticed one change, so I apologize. That's my mistake. Um, the title, we changed pupils and we replaced it with students.
Yes, that was the one comment, was that throughout the language of the policy, the word students was used, but the policy was called something with, was called non-public school pupils. So, we changed the title to be students, not pupils. But that's the only change we made, so there were no substantive change to the third read. The rest of the, um, policies are all first reads. One was on LICE. A lot of them were, so we'll let Gina, do you want to speak to?
I would love to.
Speak to all of this.
Peculosis is my favorite policy.
You can talk about the one that's third.
The third in a job, so there are no changes? Okay, go for it.
Is there any of the language in there that's discretionary? In the sense of what, you know, the non, non-enrolled district students are allowed to?
No, just this.
Oh, I was like, what was I going to say? I was like, I don't remember, it's two pages, I don't know.
No, it is, two pages.
Um, oh, this is JJJ. Uh, no.
No discretion.
There's, there's no discretionary anymore due to the new RSA.
And how does a non-enrolled, how does a non-enrolled student participates factor into our daily participation? Our, our average day of enrollment?
They don't.
They don't.
Look, because, I thought that currently, like, if a home school.
Well, the homeschool has a certain, I have to, I have to check that out.
So, it depends really on what they're participating in. If you're talking about courses, then, well, for all of these, you have to enroll. But to actually factor in, you have to be attending classes. And then we submit and depending on if you meet the threshold for a partial enrollment, it, it can be counted in.
So, this does not circumvent that calculation?
No.
No.
Is, is there any real big funding impact to, to this?
Well, that's, that's a million-dollar question. An unfunded mandate?
Depends, yeah.
What would be the circumstances that would have a significant funding impact?
A significant one? It's the top of my head.
Does this include special education services?
No. No, so we, so, so, out of the list of non-enrolled students, so we, for students who are attending charter schools, who are special education, we do provide special education services to those students. But homeschool students, they don't have access to special education services. Private school students don't have access.
Okay, and how does this, does this, again, I'm sorry, does this carry over to extracurriculars as well?
Correct, yes.
Um, is there any restrictions on how they can be evaluated for participation in things such as sports?
The same way their public school peers would be.
Yes, everything has to be the same.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to, are there, are there any questions or comments on the? So, we assume you all read these ahead of time, and if you have questions, you'll bring them to us. And then we'll just bring these questions or any of your comments back to policy if you, um, struggle with anything. So, the first one is, I'll let Gina go through.
Peculosis. So, um, there's some updated language. We no longer look for guidance from the Hampshire Department of Education, but rather Centers for Disease Control. Essentially, the difference is that we are no longer, and haven't been for a while, able to exclude students. Peculosis is, um, not, it's not something that is, um, you know, contagious or anything like that. And so, this is, this talks about what we can do. If a student is demonstrating symptoms, they may be checked by a nurse. Communication with home will follow recommendations for treatment from, um, the nurse will, will provide information to families, but there is no, um, you must leave, and there's no criteria for returning to school. So, that's what that is.
And a lot of these that you're going to see tonight are, we are aligning them with the other two districts.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. So, there's a theme, a lot of these policies are from quite some time ago. So, we have a fire drill policy, EBCB, and simply the language was just very dated. And we don't do ten fire drills anymore, we do ten drills. And specifically, we have to do six evacuation drills, four all-hazard drills. And we are referencing RSA one eighty-nine sixty-four, where at least one of the all-hazard drills must test emergency response to an armed assailant. So.
Suggest you change the title of it.
Okay, good feedback for the policy. Okay, um, all right, moving on, we have a brand-new policy. Um, KFD, use and location of automated external defibrillators. Um, so we've had them, we've had them, and we've identified in policy JLCJA where they're located and all that good stuff. This just identifies who's maintaining it, how are they registered, how are incidents reported, and what is the liability associated with that? So, that is required. And then, JLCJA.
Which is the one that we just.
That I just referenced. The only change is section A, part H, um, saying that all school-sponsored sports activities for any students of grade six through twelve be supervised by a person trained in CPR, which we've been doing already. We're just updating our policy to match the legal requirement.
Do we, um, how do we go about making sure that the people have their certifications for CPR?
So, we track them. So.
Do we conduct training?
We do. Yep. Yeah, so we will, any of our staff members can request CPR certification. We have two trainers, and we track all of that along with their expiration dates. But all of our coaches are required to be CPR certified.
Do you offer that to community members as well, do you know?
We do not.
Would it be expensive to do so?
Probably. And difficult to manage just logistically. Potentially, I would envision, maybe we could have a day where many people can go, but I'm offering services of two.
You have certain volunteers, I know as a, when I was a ski team, when I had kids on, maybe we don't do this anymore, but I, when I used to have to ride the ski team bus, I had to be CPR certified.
Yes, so we need, um, a CPR-certified individual for whenever we go on a field trip. So, that would be considered going on a field trip.
And then JLF?
JLF, reporting child abuse and neglect, so, um, this is really not changing our practice at all. It is just updating, um, I would say, cleaning up our policy, making it very easy to, um, to read and to make it very clear of what our requirements are. So, that's what this is.
Is it mandatory on there?
Yep, mandatory.
I recall it being so strange about not having to be any documentation.
Any what? I'm sorry.
Or ask for evidence of, of abuse.
It's not the teacher's job to show evidence.
No, I, I guess, I remember someone making a comment about there being less, fewer barriers to the, um, false, uh.
A false report.
Report that could trigger an event. And whether the, we actually checks and balances, and I don't know how much of that was mandatory language versus optional language that created that concern. It's been a while since we talked about. This is your first reading, but I remember talking about the policy. I thought it was this policy.
We adopted this policy in twenty-one last.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can review the minutes from the board meetings where it was discussed, but I don't actually remember that.
That's something I'd like to read through and see, is, is, is there a lower barrier to reporting that could result in well-intentioned but misdirected, um, based on, you know? Someone overhears something and said, makes a report because the repercussions of, of a report, you have to, this is a guilty to prove an innocent kind of, uh, topic.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to speak off the cuff. I would, um, tend to believe that some incidences that have occurred in the last few years would have made it so that you want to make a report, even if you don't have the evidence, just based on some reports that haven't been made. And probably should have been made.
Okay, I, I, I agree, and I understand that that may be the goal, I just.
Yeah, I can.
This is an area that I'm going to be looking at it to say, you know, can, can someone make an accusation without any substantiation that has dramatic impact? Or is there, is there a chain of command or reporting that is likely to minimize the risk?
Do you mean, like, within the school? Like, is there a, is there a checks and balance? Like, if a teacher sees or hears something, that they are supposed to go to the administration before they report? Is that what you're looking?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the mechanism is here, and I just, I haven't read through it starting out. But my concern is that someone, and I don't, I don't, again, I don't know, it says all persons, and I don't know how encompassing all persons is, but.
It's really any adult, a volunteer, everybody.
Someone hears or hears, overhears a conversation out of context, but hears something and says, oh, that, that's a red flag. My question is, what happens with that person? Is there any step before all of a sudden something that was a misconstrued conversation becomes a legal report that has, has someone removed from a household, for example?
I think you're, I think you're, that's too many steps.
It's a lot of steps.
So, like, even if you make a report, that's not.
No one's going to be removed.
Someone would have to be, there's, there's an investigation that would have to take place on the level of the state before they even get close to removing someone from a household. There would be so many steps that if they remove somebody from a household, so glad we made that report, like.
Are you sure that that's the case?
I would say that there's.
Lots of, so, I used to work for DCIF, so I'm very familiar with the process. There's an intake that happens when a call is made, and most of, no, I won't say most of those, I can't give you current data. Reports are called, and based on a number of factors, sometimes reports aren't even accepted. They are just, thank you, we are not actually going to pursue this and move on. Some are accepted, and then they are investigated, but they're thoroughly investigated before anything. Some are accepted, and then they are investigated, but they're thoroughly investigated before anything, uh, takes place.
Okay, yeah, I'm not as familiar, I just wanted to make sure that that-
I think it's a safer bet to report something, and have it be maybe not a false accusation, but a misunderstanding, or an unbounded, I think that's safer than not reporting something.
I agree.
Right.
Again.
Yeah, I know, you're looking at the language, gotcha.
I, I'm pointing out, you asked me to tell you what, uh, my concerns are.
Yep, absolutely, got it.
Yep.
We will read through it again.
In, in some states, it's a matter of, you know, only certain professionals are mandated reporters, and New Hampshire has determined that in New Hampshire, everybody is a mandated reporter if they suspect something that is putting a child at harm.
So if that's, are there any other questions on policies? So I'd love to take, um, a vote on the policy memo, which would then put all of those others into our, back, all of the first reads back to policy, we will take the feedback, and, um, it will make third reading of JJJ adopted. Okay, all those in favor? Six, zero, so that is good. I, now I need a motion to go into non-public, because we have to go back into non-public.
Isn't that, bring up something that I, I hear but related to something that-
Yes, quick, Tom, we're at like-
Does anybody know what that, the things passed, uh, that, I, I, I thought I read that it passed, but the Senate and the House, that the COA representative to the budget committee is no longer a voting member, does that, do you know if that passed?
I don't know, I'd have to look into that.
We'll try to get more into legislative updates in the future, um, all right, so I need a motion.
Process the survey.
Oh, sure, do that first, yeah.
Cause I work so hard over here.
I know, cause we're at nine, so.
Yeah, we have extensive notes, okay, so normally, uh, we started, started a regular meeting an hour early as we needed to, um, uh, address some non-public business. We then came out of non-public, we opened up our public input at six twenty-five, and remained open till six fifty-six, as, thirty minutes, as usual. Um, we entered into principals' report at six twenty-eight, actually seventeen minutes ahead of schedule, and we handled things like athletic reports, uh, course requests, uh, reports, principal reports, and so forth. We then entered deliberations at seven twenty-six, uh, we kinda lost a little ground there on time, uh, but, uh, we got a lot of interesting, um, insights. Uh, we also covered, uh, topics such as cap lock presentations, CTE agreements, end-of-year purchase, and so forth, uh, and some updates from stipend and facilities committees, and then we, uh, moved on to deliberations, uh, with adjustments, uh, at eight thirty-six, uh, and covered things like, um, giving super, uh, the superintendent and superintendent-elect authority to hire over the summer month, uh, administrative compensation, and, uh, some, uh, CTE agreements, end-of-year purchase, uh, and several policy actions that we took under deliberations, and essentially, we finished in just a little over four hours.
Thank you.
That's a long meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's not do that again.
Yeah, let's not do that again, okay, so, now I need a motion to go into non-public, um, session pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, colon, three. I think we're at C, so to C, uh, to discuss a matter which, if discussed in public, would likely affect firstly the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Um, all those in favor, I mean, I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Second by Rob, I need a roll call vote.
I, I.
Amy, I.
Cindy, I.
Holly, I.
Kate, I.
Bye.
And we are now in non-public, and nine oh one, we will not be coming back, we will adjourn from the, from the non-public. Thank you all.